Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see everyone here. Just in terms of point of order for the meeting, we have yellow cards in the back on the table. We have two opportunities. We have two opportunities to speak. So if you'd like to speak, fill out a yellow card. You can pass it to Stacy and then it'll make its way down to me. All right. We're going to start with the presentation for the world language group. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Also schön guten Abend allerseits. Bonjour, bonsoir tout le monde. Buenas tardes a todos. All of those beautiful languages and one common sentiment. Good evening to everyone. Superintendent McGee, proud to be here for your last meeting as our superintendent to present to you this evening. Board of Education, central administrators, those here in the audience, and everyone in the Washington Township community watching from home or on YouTube, and above all, our amazing WTHS students. Washington Township High School was proud to be here this evening to present a number of students with well-deserved recognition for their achievements in the area of world languages. The gift of speaking another language has far-reaching effects and is truly a treasure as we find ways to communicate with others authentically. Tonight, I am joined by our entire administrative team at Washington Township High School. Also Frau Kayla Berry, our supervisor of world languages ESL and family and consumer sciences, members of our talented world languages and ESL department who are here this evening, as we take you on a journey of our students' path in reaching this great achievement. The New Jersey State Seal of Bilinguality, we can go ahead and click that if the presentation is ready. We could click that on there, please. You'll see it in the backdrop, but you'll know what I'm talking about in a minute. Is an award, the Seal of Bilinguality is an award given by the New Jersey Department of Education in recognition of students who have studied and have attained proficiency in at least one language in addition to English by the time they graduate high school. Students receive this designation on their high school transcript in addition to earning a certificate from the state of New Jersey. Gaining proficiency in a second language is no easy task, that I can tell you. And the students here tonight can tell you that as well, as well as our teachers. Thankfully, our state, together with our district, places a huge importance on providing students with opportunities to pursue languages at very high levels, including advanced placement, and of course, with this opportunity to pursue the Seal of Bilinguality about which we are presenting tonight. It is important to continue promoting the Seal of Bilinguality and creating such opportunities for our students as to encourage students to study a second language, or third language even, or fourth language, to open the world ahead of them for both personal and professional reasons as they earn college credit and gain expanded relevant training as a result of having such proficiency. Employers and universities have the added benefit of being able to identify students with 21st century skills, those who are bilingual, and have prioritized the study of other languages and cultures so as to maximize cultural proficiency, communicative ability, and increase cognitive and memory skills to make their institutions of higher learning, their companies, and their schools even more productive and profitable as a result.
So now we get to talk about the fun part. How do we assess our students? How do they get here? Our students take what's called the Apple Assessment, and they take it in December. It is a four-section assessment. We give it over two days. It is a very rigorous assessment, and they have to pass in each section of the assessment. So in speaking, reading, writing, and listening. So it is a difficult task. I want to note here that our students have to meet the achievement of an intermediate three or higher. Teachers in the state of New Jersey are required to be in an advanced one. So that's only two levels below what a teacher must be at to be certified in the state. So these students have met a great accomplishment. We also have to take a look at their ELA proficiency. They have to have met the ELA graduation requirement. And for ESL students, they have to attain proficiency through their access exams that they're taking. For this year, we did not have a graduation pathway for our 2023 graduates, but we will in the future years. So now we'd like to invite some of our students who are going to show you exactly what they do in their world language classroom. They're going to talk to you a little bit in their language that they're learning currently. So let's start with Spanish.
Ms. Lyra. Buenas tardes. Me llamo Leila Bennett. Antes que nada, felicidades a todos por este logro. Yo sé que tomó mucho trabajo y deberían estar orgullosos de sí mismos. Suena dramático, pero español ha cambiado mi vida. Recuerdo cuando interesante me pareció cuando solo estaba aprendiendo lo básico. Todavía recuerdo mi maestra de ese año, señora Boyne. Ella era tan simpática y alentadora, y desde entonces yo he tenido maestras como ella. Eran graciosas y buenas en su trabajo, y debido a ellos me pareció que la cultura española es muy interesante. Y ahora tengo una pasión por los idiomas. En el futuro me encantaría ser profesora de español y impactar a alguien como a mí me han impactado y influenciado. Muchas gracias. Felicidades.
And now we'll bring up our German student, Mr. Christian Heil.
Hallo. Ich heiße Christian. Ich werde heute über Deutsch in meinem Leben sprechen. Deutsch spielt eine unglaubliche große Rolle in meinem Leben und auch in meiner Ausbildung. Eine andere Sprache zu lernen und sprechen ist etwas, für auf die sehr stolz bin. Ich habe mehr als eine Sprache gelernt, ich habe eine Kultur gelernt, und auch ein anderes Leben gelernt. Ich habe eine Identität gefunden, die ich ausstrahle. Ich bin Amerikaner in der Haut und Deutscher im Geist. Obwohl ich Deutsch nicht an der Uni studieren werde, kann ich immer noch Deutsch in meinem Leben nutzen. Ich führe Ingenieurein und ich muss auch Ingenieur mit vielen anderen Leuten sprechen. Wenn ich es durchkann, ist es immer nützlich. Ich führ auch im Leben mindestens einmal nach Deutschland reisen. Ich bin immer dankbar für fantastische Lehrer wie Helmut Klasky, Frau Graham, und Frau Bocke, und auch für eine tolle Erfahrung. Ich habe in der Deutschklasse viele Gelegenheiten bekommen, und ich hoffe in der Zukunft Deutsch zu benutzen. Ich danke Ihnen für Ihre Zeit.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. Daniel Picheau with French.
Bonsoir. Bonsoir, Madame und Monsieur. Je m'appelle Daniel Picheau. Je suis si fier de vous parler de la plus belle langue du monde, le français. Le français est une langue riche en histoire et culture. L'art dans ces musées comme le Louvre, ces bons monuments comme la Tour Eiffel, et les châteaux magnifiques comme Versailles, et sa cuisine raffinée comme la tour d'Argent à Paris, ou une grande influence dans le monde. Je suis content d'étudier le français à Washington Township parce que cela m'a permis de communiquer avec ma famille en France. Je vais utiliser le français dans mes études du culinaire et commerce. J'attends avec impatience de pouvoir étudier en France et continuer d'améliorer mes talents linguistiques. Merci beaucoup.
This year, we're proud to announce that we will honor 35 students with their Seal of Bilinguality and two students in two languages. They've achieved this in two languages in addition to English.
All right, I'm going to read one of the certificates, and then we'll call you up. And Scott will hand your certificate, and I think, I'm sure we're going to want to photo op, correct? Some, in the back? Okay. So right through the doors when we're all finished. All right, so the certificate reads, Certificate of Recognition. The Washington Township Board of Education proudly recognizes student Washington Township High School New Jersey Seal of Bilinguality for Spanish, French, or German, in proud recognition of your attainment of the New Jersey Seal of Bilinguality, which verifies your successful completion of the World Languages Proficiency Assessment. We congratulate you for meeting the requirements in the language domains of reading, writing, speaking, and listening to earn this noteworthy distinction. Presented April 25th, 2023. Congratulations, everyone. Joshua Baggett. Leila Bennett. Abigail Brown. Giovanna Castellan. Christina Chan. Ryan Crowley. Herschel Druve. Sorry if I pronounced that. Herschel Druve. Thank you. Max Dorado. Drew Dolgus. Ryan Fitzpatrick. Kat J. Alexia Gordillo. Christian Heil. Jackson Heil. Myron Hernandez. Jaden Kupischke. Anna Lee. Jackson McCray. Anna Mohihu. Alyssa Murray. Alexia Navarro. Isabella Oli. Valentino Paletta. Sean Partchuski. Daniel Picheau. Bailey Ratcliffe. Kathleen Rodriguez. Emily Ryan. Ava Ryan. Daria Santos. Juliana Chivoni. Abby Thomas. Vanessa Ventura Miguel. Jessica Way. And Alexander Weidman. Congratulations, everyone. Congratulations. If you would all go to the back, the doors are open. We'd love to get your picture.
I have, I have, I have full faith in you, and I'm going to love. I'm going to watch it again just to watch you screw it. I can't wait. Learn all the facts.
I'm not going to read, I'm not going to read this.
No, you're just going to read the names.
I'm going to read the names and what they, what they did because they're, you know.
I'm curious to see how that's going to go with that big picture. All right, next we have the Washington Township High School Track Team. Mr. Murphy will present.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to place our state championship trophy. I told Mr. Mayo, and I'm not going to block her view, but Mr. Ross would have been disappointed if I didn't bring the hardware. Like to start off first and foremost by thanking our Board of Education for providing opportunities for our student athletes. We have over 1,200 student athletes in the high school, which represents a large portion of our population, and many of them were honored. So congratulations to our world language department as well for a wonderful showing of excellence in world language. This evening, we have excellence in the world of education-based athletics in track and field. And our indoor track team, the 2023 Minuteman Indoor Track Team, won the 29th overall state championship for Washington Township High School. It's the second time in school history the 2009 team won the state championship. It's the second time that we've accomplished this. Joining me this evening is head coach Chris Mitchell, assistant coach Andrew Torni, Coach Boswick. Assistant coach Rich Boswick could not be with us this evening. His daughter was celebrating her birthday. But Coach Boswick, interesting fact, was the head coach of the 2009 team. So excellence follows Coach Mitchell and Coach Boswick, and certainly Coach Torni. But the 2000, the Group Four State Championship Relay Team, it was highlighted by performances, state championship performances from the Shuttle Hurdle Relay Team, the 4x400-meter relay team, and the 4x200-meter relay team, as they all won their individual events at the state championship meet. I'd also like to recognize and thank our booster club. Is Mrs. Boswick here? Where's Mrs. Boswick? Where's Moon? She's very humble, but the work of all our booster clubs in our community cannot go unnoticed. And certainly our track and field booster club and the parents that form that and the work that they do to support our athletes is from the bottom of my heart. I'm very thankful, and I know our athletes are as well. So with no further ado, to recognize our athletes and to say some comments, our head coach of the Minuteman State Championship Track Team, Mr. Chris Mitchell.
Okay, I really have nothing planned whatsoever, so I'll pick this pretty quick. This year has been a special year. It really has kind of built over the last couple of years. A great group of young men, great coaches, everything has started to come together for us. And just, these guys work their butts off every single day. They do everything as fast as them. And then over the last about year or so, we've had a lot of success, and we've been blessed that way. This day was a special day because we really came in today, and Coach Torio admitted to it, that we were hoping we'd do okay. We really, we're just going to put our best foot forward and see how everything played out, and then things follow our way. And we had some tremendous performances, as Red Off and others. And we were able to get the job done, and it was a pretty special day. And, you know, hopefully, obviously, we continue on, do better and better as obviously into this year. Luckily for us, we had a great weekend this weekend, winning the Woodbury Relays this weekend. So that was good for the first time in 25 years. 1999, the last time we won that, and that was this weekend, we tied for it, but so went. And it's just that hopefully we're going to have more success. And again, the key thing about what we're trying to do here is just do things the right way and respectful, and obviously compete as best we can every single time. And we've been lucky to do that so far. We've had a really successful last about year and a half, and we just want to keep things rolling. We have a great group of kids, great group of young men that have been able to get this thing done. So, and we have great seniors, we have great juniors and sophomores coming through, and we just continue to do the best we can from meet to meet. So, thank you very much. I guess right now we're going to do these proclamations, right? Yes. So we'll do that for the young men.
So there are quite a number of certificates, and normally we read a little summary. However, all the summaries are different, so I'm just going to read names, and some of them have multiple awards. So this is Yasha, Yashaia. Yashua Brown, 20, I should probably have you do this. 2023 Group Four State Champion, 4x400-meter relay, State Champion 55-meter high hurdles, and South Jersey Group Four Sectional Champion, 55-meter high hurdles, as well as State Champion Shuttle Hurdle Relay. This kid took all of them home. All right. Hunter Botswick, 4x400-meter relay, State Champion. Jack Shuck, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. John Williams, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. And 4x200-meter relay State Champion. Okay. Zachary Cotel, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship and Group Four State Champion Shuttle Hurdle Relay. John Santos, 2023 Group Four State Champion, 4x200-meter relay and third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Logan Perez, Group Four State Champion, 4x200-meter relay and third-place Group Four Sectional Championship. Rich Botswick, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. I thought, I thought it doubled. Okay. Oh, well, there we go. Hunter Botswick, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Vince Akami, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. And we've got a bunch here. Kanye Mills, third-place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship, Group Four State Champion for 4x400-meter relay and also for Shuttle Hurdle Relay. And another of quite a lot, Miles Reed, third place for Group Four Sectional Championship, Group Four State Champion for 4x200-meter relay and for 4x400-meter relay. All right, Nico Di Giacomo, third place for Group Four Sectional Championship and Group Four State Champion Shuttle Hurdle Relay. Carson Thomas, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Aaron Kolosowski, third place Group Four Sectional Championship. Chris Fisher, third place Group Four Sectional Championship. Francois Hansen, third place Group Four Sectional Championship. Christian Heil, third place Group Four Sectional Championship. Is he our Seal of Bilinguality? Oh, my gosh, winning in lots of ways tonight. Colin Keen, third place sectional championship. I feel like I'm just repeating myself an awful lot here. Tellis McDonald, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Okay. Zigana Namet, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Quasir Robinson, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Now it's just a thing that I'm going to keep saying it to make sure I don't mess up. Alex Schultz, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Peter Jamolus, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Brian Velay, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. At this point, everyone could probably just say it with me. Andy Wall, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. Chris Mitchell, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. And last but not least, Andrew Torni, third place South Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship. And I believe we will do a photo op out there. Was that us? Yes. Everybody good? All right, so we'll all go out there to do a little photo op. Thank you.
See Ralph? Ralph, we bring you in, we get a state championship. We bring you in, state championship already.
Giving you no credit. Zero credit for you. All right, well.
Ten, at least.
I don't see anybody.
I'm going to pause one second just so we can let the others come in.
Is Heather Cueva here?
There she is.
There she is. All right. Perfect.
She's working with Kathy Gellner.
Welcome. There's more sitting there. We did that on purpose for you.
Yeah, they're doing photo ops out there with the uh, track stars. I don't know. Maybe for the, what you call it, the uh... For the newsletter maybe or something like that.
She's here. She's in the podium.
All right, let's go.
We're doing a video.
Thank you, officer. Thank you for allowing us to come share some information with, about the Washington Township Special Education Parent Advisory Group, or CPAG. We wanted to reintroduce ourselves to the district and share a little bit of information about what we do and how we can help our district's families. We went through a reorganization period with the help of SPAN, our State Parent Advocacy Network, and our district's special education staff, and most importantly, parent volunteers. We're now working on reintroducing CPAG to the district. We are made up of parent volunteers, special education staff, and other community members. CPAG gives parents the opportunity to provide direct input to the school district about policies, programs, practices, and services that have an impact on students with disabilities and their families. Our job is to increase the proactive involvement of families by inviting input that can be used to shape local educations, special education policies. It is in our state legislature to, that each school district in the state of New Jersey should have a CPAG in active status. What is the benefit of having a district CPAG? It provides a chance to have outreach, to engage our district families, and to see where our district may need to make updates to programs and policies. It encourages positive relationships with our district families. And we can work with the parents and district to help foster a beneficial support program for all of our students by providing connections to resources and information. We participate in collaborative problem solving to make sure our students with disabilities are getting the help that they need to ensure that they're successful in their school career. We can help provide system change based on input. We work with parents to see where they have any unmet needs and see if it's something that should be added in the school or at a district level. We become a trusted source of information. CPAG members help support other parents, whether they're new to the district or new to special education services. We can be a guide to help parents figure out who to contact to get help or additional information about a program. We provide information sharing. We provide opportunities for the district to share information with all parents about instructional programs, areas where there's professional development opportunities, and how to get support in certain areas. And all, we can help improve services and programs. We are here to meet the needs of our kids in our school and community. We can also help identify areas where there may be more need for resource allocation, where parents could provide input regarding resources and help us establish priorities on what we need to look at in special education. We do have a few ways for parents to be able to contact us. The primary ones are our email address and our Facebook page. We're also set up on the district website. You can go out there and look for CPAG and we are there. There is some information out there. We do rely on our special education staff to help us get documents up there, so we're trying to move more towards keeping things posted on Facebook, so you can follow us there on our Facebook page. And you can always email us at any time. We've also asked that our special education department provide a flyer about CPAG in the packets that go out to new families coming into the district, so that way they are aware that there are people out there and support resources within the parents as well as within the schools. During our reorganization period, we worked to set up a vision and mission statement for our CPAG and some initial goals, which will change from year to year as we identify the needs that come and as we grow as a team. We will work with the Board of Education through a board liaison and we will help to identify the areas that are biggest need and priorities that we need to help to make sure all of our kids with special needs are supported and have the ability to succeed. We do, we can submit requests directly to the special education office and see if there's things that we can work with there to help. And we can also go to the Board of Education if there's needs, if we're identifying a need that needs to be made to a policy. Our CPAG is a network of families to share information, to support each other, and to learn about what issues may have an impact to our differently abled kids. We can help engage parents of students with special needs and help shape our policies to make sure all of our students are successful. Through our meetings, we are looking to provide opportunities to families to help them support their kids the best that they can. Our parent steering committee has an established set of bylaws for our CPAG governance. We are made up of parent volunteers from each of the schools in the district. We meet together as a committee and help plan open meetings and events. We can set up special committees if needed to engage our families to address needs for the district if there's a specific concern that a parent has. We are not a PTO. There are no dues to join us. All you need to do is just come out to an open meeting. We welcome anybody to come out to learn about our resources and just get information about what our district is doing. We want to make sure that we have at least one person from each of the schools in the district on our committee. We do plan the meeting topics and we record the minutes of our meetings. Our steering committee members serve as a point person in each of the schools to help provide guidance to families in that school on processes to get help, whether it's directing them to the child study team or somebody within the special education department or even some online resources. We can work with the parents to see if their concern is specific to them or if it's something that's systemic within the district. We try to focus more on the district-wide issues rather than parents' specific concerns, but we do provide support and guidance for specific parents in cases so that way they know where they can go to get help. During our open meetings, we try to keep the topics focused on a ra- on information on all ranges of needs. They are intended to be educational and not event session for parents. We are here to identify system-wide issues. We do ask the people attending the meetings to keep the topic of discussion to our main focus and we do allow time for questions and answers for parents at the end of the meetings. We want to provide a space where all families can be heard and be respectful of their time while they're here. Being a parent of a child with special needs can be difficult, especially when you aren't sure where to go and where to get help. We're here to be that place for families in the district and to support them and find solutions to help make their child's learning experience better. While we're here, I did want to make a couple of quick announcements. I don't have any certificates to hand out, sorry. But we do have a couple of things coming up. Our next open parent meeting, which we invite everybody to attend, which will be on May 30th, right here in the boardroom. We will be talking about how to keep our kids engaged during the summer months and some summer activities. We're hoping to have a speaker come. It's not confirmed yet, but we're hoping to have a speaker or two to come talk about some of the district's summer learning programs, including the extended school year and some other programs that they do run during the summer. We are also partnering with the Office of the DEIB in holding a resource fair on July 20th. We were gonna have it Saturday, but due to some other circumstances that came up, we needed to reschedule. We are inviting area resources, therapists, support groups, social groups, and other participants to come and present information there and have information available to any of the parents that want to come out. So that will be on July 20th during the summer and we hope that you will be able to come out and at least check out some of the other resources that will be out there. So you can keep a lookout on our page. We'll be sending some information home as well within the backpack and reaching out to all the schools to kind of help get us, get the information out to the parents that need it. Thank you so much.
Heather, what time on May 30th? Seven?
Thank you, Heather, so much for that. I appreciate it. Next presentation is the presentation of the 2023-2024 school budget. I'm gonna turn it over to Janine and Jack, right?
Good evening, everyone. Um, to give a foundation of what you're about to preview and review and then our goal would be to have the board approve a budget to close out the evening relative to this part of the night is one, our tentative budget is required to be board approved, right? Previously, uh, the board approved and was sent to the county office on March 20th for review and approval. That tentative budget, some of you may have been here, was reviewed here by Janine and I and that must go into the county office for their preliminary review. That was approved by the county office. Uh, the date was April 6th. Tonight is our public hearing, required by code, on the budget and that final approval by the Board of Education. Any changes made for, from the tentative budget back in March for tonight would be detailed during the presentation. Okay?
Okay, so um, as Mr. McGee mentioned, our budget was approved, so normally when we have the public hearing, this is the final adoption of the budget, but it does give us a chance to make any adjustments. Any adjustments made um, between the tentative budget and the public hearing, we do talk about at the meeting because in between all of this, our budget is advertised. So if you happen to notice, I believe we have copies, if it's not back there, it's on the agenda. Um, we are required, once the county approves it, to put an official notification in the newspaper, so any changes get talked about. Normally, the changes, it's a little unique situation this year because normally changes would be if we became aware of an issue that we really need to, needed to adjust our budget or if the county office recommends some changes. None of that happened this year, but we were made aware of some additional funding that we were um, set to receive after we had our tentative budget meeting and submitted it to the county office, so later in the presentation, I will um, talk about that. And then on the next slide, I know um, some of this, if you were at the last meeting, you might have heard, but I'll touch on a few of those. I'd just like to talk about some of the challenges of the budget, so you know, when we get to some of the other slides of, of what's being cut, what, what we're keeping and what we're planning on doing, the ultimate goal is to get the best budget that we can that will move the district forward to achieve our goals. And it's um, you know, a team um, process. We start in the fall and all the administrators review their budget and put together a budget based on their needs and we spend months going through um, line by line. Um, as most of you know, we've been losing state aid for a number of years now and I'll, I'll um, touch on that a little bit. Um, I'll also just touch on um, a comparison of our revenues because school districts have two main sources of revenue. That's state aid, which is being cut year after year, and taxes. So um, as you can imagine, with a limited amount of revenue that you can increase, but going from one budget year to the next and you have contractual increases, I'm sure, you know, you've all been to the grocery store and you just, pretty much everything we're buying these days, there's a price increase. So you have to kind of capture all of that and, and again, come up with the best possible plan for the district, uh, which is, is um, what we believe that we've done. So again, contractual increases, benefit increases, transportation increases have been out of control. Uh, we also have staffing issues that doesn't help us at all because we lose some of the flexibility that we um, have in some years. We're also dealing with staffing shortages and, and substitute shortages, so we have to figure out a way to cover those, not only cover those costs, but also project those costs. That's been difficult the past couple of years as well because one of um, the main things that we do during the budget process is look at, you know, back five years, look at what's coming, so you know, between the pandemic and some of the price fluctuations we've been dealing with, it, it is, it does get difficult to project. Um, this slide here just gives a snapshot of our state aid, so um, it's, it's basically the past seven years, but we have been losing state aid for a number of years. If you look at the, at the top portion, it's the different categories of aid that we get and it's based on our residential enrollment. Um, and then towards the bottom in the um, bold print, you see the amount that was lost for each year. So as you can see, we got hit pretty hard this year, um, over 1.5 million that we lost for this budget year. Um, you can see it's close to 8 million just, that we lost just for the past um, seven years. Last, next year, I mean, is the last year for the planned um, state aid cuts. I don't know what's gonna happen after that, but the projection for next year is a lot less than some of the years that you see up on the screen, um, so that's good news, but again, with some of the challenges um, I mentioned, we'll be um, starting the plan for the next budget for sure as soon as this one is complete. This is the comparison of revenue I talked about, because obviously you can only spend what you're bringing in, so the revenue that we're projecting really drives what we're able to keep in the budget, um, what we have to cut, and again, the, the main goal is try to keep programs intact to the best of our ability to keep moving the district forward. So the first line right there, I just want to touch on because that is our fund balance, so it's kind of like savings, so it, it's basically from, this would be two budget years, it's a combination of revenues that came in that we didn't expect or unspent balances. Now, if you were here for the last meeting, that number had no change. We were projecting the same amount of fund balance. It looks like it's increased now because that, that number that you see, the change, uh, $996,411, that's the additional um, supplemental stabilization aid that we were notified that we were receiving after the tentative budget. So that is one of the changes and I do have a, a specific slide for that, so it'll be a little less confusing, but I did want to touch on that. And then the only other thing I'll mention about fund balances, you do have to be careful because again, you're, you're, if you're utilizing it to balance your budget, you really have to control that each year and look at your spending and um, kind of track that because if that kind of is going like this, up and down, that is, it, you know, it's, it's instability in your budget. So we really have to watch that. And then just one more thing, the reason why that is, the additional state aid is showing that way is because the money is coming from the state's 22-23 budget. So because it's coming from them in 22-23, we have to realize it as revenue in 2023. We're using it to support 23-24, so when we close out our current fiscal year, it flows the fund balance, so we'll have that money in there to appropriate. So that's why it looks like that on the revenue side of the budget. Um, and again, the, the, um, if you were following the last meeting, I think when we were here in March, we were just starting the year that something may happen and then I believe it was April 3rd, there was a vote on it and we've been getting bits and pieces of guidance over the past couple of weeks, so this is, this is kind of um, you know, snuck up on us and we really have a whole lot of time to time to deal with it. The next line down is our local tax levy. So as most of you probably know, there is a cap on the amount that we can increase the local tax levy. It's 2%. We are asking for a 2% increase in the tax levy. You can see that amount is $1.8 million, which does present a struggle for us because then if you look at the next line down, when you look at our state aid, we're actually getting cut $1.5 million. So that really has been the struggle over the past couple of years is only really having one revenue stream to increase. Some of the other items that you see, it's kind of controlled by the state. There are different streams of revenue that we can apply for. So that's a projection that the state gives us. Further down in the general fund section, capital reserve withdrawal, what that is, is money that we have saved for capital projects. So what we do is, when I get to the slide that has our capital items, you'll see that it actually ends up being a wash in the budget because we bring in our capital reserve money to offset those costs. And just the minor fluctuation there is just, just happens to be that the projects that we're budgeting from one year to the next. The middle part of the sheet where you see special revenue fund, that's our federal and state grants that we get. We don't have a whole lot of control over that. In fact, the numbers that you see there, we don't know our allocations yet, so we're only allowed to budget 85% of what we received the year before. The other difference and the reason why it looks like an increase is because that is our unspent ESSER funds that we're still allowed to use in the 23-24 school year. And then finally, the debt service fund, that is simply a separate fund that we have to budget for our annual payment of the debt that we have outstanding. So you could think of it kind of like a mortgage payment, and that is supported through the local tax levy, which voters approve when that debt is issued. I always like to talk about what's included in the 23-20, in the budget because, again, the goal is to hang on to as many of the programs as we can and to continue with, you know, important items like curriculum adoption. So we have a cycle, right, to adopt different curriculums each year. So if you don't stay on that cycle and then you have a bunch of costs hitting you in one year, that's not a good thing. So we always try with our curriculum adoption, you can see equipment and vehicles. So you never want to wait until, you know, all your vehicles are about to die and then suddenly you have to replace a large number, so we really keep an eye on that. Also devices and technology. As many of you know, we have a one-to-one initiative, so we have specific grade levels where we cycle in new devices, so the children, our students, get new devices every three to four years. So again, important item to keep up on because if you don't continue to budget, it's going to hit you all at once. Capital projects, same thing. We try to, in our budget at a minimum, include any projects that we need to do for safety and security purposes, and I'll talk about that. Includes preschool expansion, where we have a couple of new classrooms coming into play. We do get per pupil state funding for that. And then, again, this budget includes no reduction or cuts in our programming. So budget additions, there's not many here, but I'd like to list them out just so everyone's aware of anything new. We do have a new autism room, new multiple disabilities class. These classes are being created for students that are moving up from other buildings to higher levels. And then it's also, even though I'm calling it in addition to the budget, it's because it's a new class, however, it's not an additional cost because the cost to, for tuition to send the students out of district and transportation would have actually been more expensive. So it's funded through those tuition and transportation savings. In addition, the, some of the existing staffing positions that we have were repurposed into this, into these classrooms, so we actually only had to create three new assistant positions in order to open up these classrooms. Again, I talked about preschool expansion. We have a couple of new classrooms. They are funded through the aid that we apply for that is a true per pupil aid, which is not what our other aid is like, unfortunately. And then, very happy to report that we're continuing to phase in our special law enforcement officers. So after next year's budget, we'll have three more, which was our original plan, that this year was year one where we added three. So as of next year, we will have one officer at each building, which is, you know, a huge plus for us. We have a great relationship with our police. We, you know, appreciate everything they do. They do a lot that most people probably don't realize, and it's a huge accomplishment to get the number of officers that we have and, again, just the relationship that we have with them. So we're super happy about that.
Janine, I said this last time, but again, a public thank you to Chief Gersick and his team, and also Mayor Gattonelli and Town Council for the relationship that we have and that cooperative partnership to allow this to happen. Okay?
This slide has our capital projects, and these are the projects that I mentioned earlier, are funded through our capital reserve. Again, some of these, I'm not going to read each one, but some of them are safety and security related. Other projects are, just like I mentioned with the vehicles, we try to cycle in the projects so we don't have a huge expense hitting us all at once. So you can take a look at those. This isn't part of the change to the budget. We also have a lease that we do every year where we include our curriculum adoption items and many of our vehicles. So you can see the dollar amounts there for different technology equipment, like computer labs and staff computers, the device refresh for the students. We'd like to include funding every year to upgrade playgrounds, not only to make them safe and keep them safe, but to make them ADA compliant. So we had a couple of projects going on this year in that regard, and we'll have a couple more next year. The next couple of lines are the curriculums that are being adopted for this year, tech ed, family consumer science, and art. And then continuing on, we have a couple more, geometry, a small portion of geometry, special ed. Then we have our vehicles that are being replaced, that are on a replacement schedule, so they're set to be replaced, or in some unfortunate cases with our operations and grounds vehicles, they're already off the road and they're just too old to even have back on the road. We have some food service equipment, again, just to try to keep that on a cycle so it doesn't hit you all at once. And then the final item is some data warehousing programs that are important to the district that we included for this year. The next slide is going to address some cuts. So every year when we're developing the budget, unfortunately with the level of state aid we're losing and the number of years, we do, well, whether we're losing money or not, we always sit down and we analyze our staffing. So there are some staffing cuts, and I have the positions kind of grouped and listed for you there along with the total salaries and benefits at the bottom. As I mentioned on an earlier slide, this is the tax increase that we're asking for for 23-24. Again, it's 2%, 1.8 million. This is showing the tax impact just based on, I have a few on the left, different assessed values for homes. Right there in the middle is the average home in Washington Township. So you can see over to the right, the annual increase of the tax increase. Okay, and this is the slide that I was mentioning is going to address the adjustments. So the only adjustment we're making for, to this budget from our tentative budget and the advertised budget is the inclusion of the supplemental stabilization aid, which, you know, flows through the fund balance that was on that first sheet. So the projects, one of the, when we got the guidance on this, and part of the application process is that we're being told this is a one-shot deal, one-shot of money. So when we go into our next year, our state aid increase or decrease is not based on our state aid for this year plus this. So we're not, this is not returning. So the recommendation was to spend the money on non-recurring items, and part of the plan we have to submit is, you know, assuming this is approved, there's just a online application we have to do, but we have to write a plan on how we would go into next year without this money. So again, perfect opportunity to do some projects that, most of these projects here that we picked, that administration picked are either safety, you know, it's going to help us a little bit with safety, they're projects that the first couple, in fact, are, were in desperate need of, or things that always end up getting cut. And, you know, again, if you continue to just let things like this go, the buildings get to a place where you're no longer repairing and maintaining, but you're doing complete replacements, which is much more expensive.
In addition, as Janine goes through it, keep in mind, in terms of a priority and a mindset, trying to impact the greatest number of students that can benefit from these, in many of these cases, as well as our co-curricular programs, our athletic programs. You heard Kevin Murphy talk about 1,200 of our, just over 2,000 number of students who are involved in those student athletic programs. Also those, in fact, that would benefit our community, that involves our student body and our parents and our school community that have high impact, and also knowing this money that's coming in and things that can be attributed to something that can be long and sustaining over an extended period of time, that we know our budgets moving forward would not necessarily have these kinds of dollars. And keeping in mind, we've had a six-year run now, one more after this, of a reduction in state aid that has been impactful in the millions of dollars, where our facilities have had wear and tear relative to things that we need, that this dollars, these kinds of dollars provide that kind of opportunity.
Okay. So I'll just go through some of these. The first, several items are sound system replacements that, this is one of the ones that I was talking about, we desperately need. They're failing, they're not working. So not only will this benefit our arts programs, but as you know, as, you know, if there's any parents out there, we have a number of community events, you know, shows, award ceremonies, there's training in there, there's assemblies and all kinds of things where these systems will be utilized. We have a couple, we're planning a district-wide painting project. It's been a number of years since we've had a painting project on a large scale, so we wanted to take the opportunity to get some larger areas done. We do have a couple of painters on our maintenance staff who do a fabulous job, but as you can imagine with the number of buildings we have, it's limited what they can do during the school year with school and session. So this is, we thought was a great opportunity to take care of some larger areas that we can't seem to get to time-wise and budget-wise. And then we have a line item in there for outside improvements of all buildings. This, again, are some of the things that you just tend to like, hey, that's the first thing to cut when you're looking for things to cut. This could vary. We're planning on doing something in each building. It could vary from each building. Could be anything from trees to shrubs to some rocks, maybe some lighting, anything that they need to make the front of their building not only look nicer, but also be more safe when you're talking about lighting and that kind of thing, sidewalks, things like that. And then if you continue down, we have some plans for some revamping of some of our fitness areas that would benefit our athletes as well as our physical education classes and our adaptive PE rooms. These are another areas where, you know, you never quite get around to replacing that equipment. So we want to make them more user-friendly for our students and for all students to use after school, should they want to do that. Part of it is out by the athletic fields to repurpose a building, and this is a little bit of safety meshed in here, that is used for ground staff. So there's a lot of trucks out there and equipment, but at the same time, there's students, you know, going out to phys ed class and coming back, going out to sporting events and spectators. So we want to try to relocate some of the equipment that's kind of in that area that could be a safety issue and upgrade all of those areas.
Janine, can we?
Yep.
It's the building across from O'Brien Hall, just to give you a picture of what Pavilion means and where that is, right? And that would be transformed, so I'll tell you what it would be transformed to, so you know the building.
And then finally, we also, just like we have sound replacement for some of our secondary buildings, we're planning some funds for our elementary buildings. As many of you probably know, they have rooms where they have sound systems and have their assemblies and that kind of thing. So this would kind of be on a building-by-building basis, depending on their need, what they need for their multipurpose rooms. They might need projectors, they might need new sound systems, so whatever it is that they need. Okay? So that takes care of any adjustments that we're making between last time and this time. And then the final slide just gives the total budget by fund. I'd just like to end with this because this is the numbers that you'll see on the resolutions. So if you guys looked at the agenda, the resolutions, there's specific things that we have to cover in the resolutions. These numbers are different than a tentative budget, just simply because of the dollars that I just talked about. And that's it.
Thank you, Janine and Jack. Any questions from the board?
Do you have some questions?
I'd like to start off with a statement. I was assigned to the business committee back in January and spent a lot of time on the budget, pretty much a full day on a Saturday. And I was motivated last week to ask the board to consider in Policy 0155, board committees, that we have a committee meeting that would involve the entire board. Because what happened here is we basically, and I'm off the committee now, and one of the things I said is I'd like to stay on the committee till the budget is over, but the response I got was the budget was done. And that's kind of true. But what happened was, we were given more state aid, stabilized aid, and we were going to have a committee meeting to talk about how we're going to utilize that money. So if you were here last week, or people that are watching, it actually turned out that we didn't have to do that because there were only four people that said that they wanted to go. I just want to let you know I didn't go, and it wasn't because I didn't want to go, but other people changed their mind, and then we couldn't do it because there was a quorum. So that being said, I'll bring up my questions now about the budget. I have a question for Mrs. Wetter. If you could just help me understand something, I know it's troubling to see how much money we have been losing over the last few years in state aid. And my understanding, what I would like to ask you to help me with, is my understanding wrong? There was a change probably around 2010, '12, '13, '14, where Washington Township was getting money based on a student enrollment. And the student enrollment was declining each year, but we still got money based on whenever that law came in, so we got a pretty good chunk of money, and we always went up to 2%. So then that law changed, and as a result, districts like us, whose enrollments, I mean, I think we were probably close to 10,000 students. Right now, what are we at, about 7,100 students? Our enrollment has significantly gone down every year, and now that's why we're getting the reduced aid. Am I correct in my thinking?
Yes, that's correct. So back when the formula... So, back when the formula changed, there were issues with the formula, and instead of funding it by student, they kept everyone's aid flat. So, those were the years where we were getting the same aid despite what was happening with our students. And that was happening statewide. And it is unfortunate, even now, you know, as much as you hear the funding formula, the funding formula is what it is, but it's never fully funded. So, like I said, we have been losing over the years. It still isn't based on your actual enrollment, but we'll see what happens in the future.
Okay. I have a second question to help me understand this as well. When we got this stabilized aid, okay, that came in a little bit under $1 million, what I have found originally, that, and we still have to do it, we have to report to the state how we're going to use the money. But, and when it first came out, it appeared that it was separate from the budget, so what you're going to use this money for outside of the budget, it had to be like a one-and-done kind of thing, it can't be something that would continue. However, my understanding is now that this stabilization aid is now to be included in the entire budget. Is that correct?
Yes. That's what we're.
That being said, my understanding is also this. For instance, we have a project where we're doing $800,000 for bleachers, and that has to be done. Am I understanding this correctly? We could use that aid for that $800,000, and we could say, that's what we're using, a portion of this money for the bleachers. And then the money that we're getting, because it's really additional aid, we could use it for something else. So, I have a couple of questions. When the committee met, what was the discussion in terms of priorities? What other things were brought up? Right off the top of my head, and you had mentioned it, we had a deficit of $1,500,500, and we had to cut staff as a result of it. Now, we got this aid back. Is it possible that we can keep some of our people that we are letting go, and we could use that $800,000 over here and use the other to keep our people? Just wondering, is that a possibility? Also, that being said, let's go back to the discussion of the committee. What were the priorities? Were these the priorities? Were there other things talked about? Can you kind of fill me in as a board member? What are some of the things that was being discussed?
Scott, yeah.
Let's let Scott, because he's the chair, start there and fill in.
You gotta punch it to make it work.
No, that doesn't go warm. When you go back and look at the tape, you can't really hear it.
It's working? All right. Don't move it. So, you move it. Yeah, it's up. Okay, so, what did we go over in priorities? Connie, you know this because you were in several of the meetings, right? I stressed, and the committee stressed, we wanted to make sure that test score gaps were covered, right? That was a big priority. And we talked about that for a while, we talked about the use of Lincoln, if that's in the budget, and other things that are in the budget. Safety was another big thing that we wanted to have addressed. You'll see safety issues being addressed in the budget as well. And then we also did talk about looking forward, because we know that there's a cut coming next year, and we have a salary increase for the teachers, we have a salary increase for support staff, and a little over 3% on teachers, 5% for support staff, so we have to account for all of that. So, we did consider all that. We talked through things like bleachers and stuff like that as well. You know, we did talk through about staffing as well, and I know you've been a big proponent that this district's been staffed for a student population of 8,000-type students, and now we're starting, we're at 7,200 students. So, we talked about, were the staffing changes relative to some of those changes in the size of the student body and the student population, right sizing some of those things? So, we did talk a lot about that. We also did talk about the possibility of trying to bank some cap, right, to defray the hit that was coming next year. We talked about that pretty extensively. But, a lot of these things need to be done, and I think the administration did a really good job in putting forth a reasonable budget that addressed the concerns that we had as a committee. And I think that's helping keep our students safe, address the gaps that we have with test scores, and also, you know, looking forward.
Thank you. Glad that you did talk about the bank cap. That was something that I brought up last week. I understand, a lot of times, we don't want to go that route, because when we raise the budget up by 2%, the following year, there's a bigger number there. That, you know, goes for saying that gives you more money. Yes, a concern of mine was that the number of students and some of the staffing, I just want to make sure, the staffing that I was always concerned about was administrative staffing. You know, I think what we have with the students and the kids is a good thing. So, in other words, you did look at a lot of things. Something that was brought up in the business committee that I know when I was part of it, was there was an issue that was brought forward, and I thought we said we're going to address it in the budget. That was the issue, maybe, Jack, you could bring me up to speed on this. With the computers, particularly at the middle school, they tend, their battery life seems to be an issue, and having to charge them in the classroom with a safety issue with the wires. Did we put anything in the budget to address that issue?
Well, one of the most important things, and, you know, we talked about this in the business committee, is the quality and notoriety of the devices that you have. So, in recent years, we've, are, and are phasing out ones that were maybe not as robust in terms of long-lasting for those that are, so the kinds of devices that are going to be repeated this year, moving next year in our adoptions, right, for the grade levels that we have, are far more reliable relative to life of battery. But we also have monies in our regular budget attributed to what we can do for that. Keep in mind, that project, and I know our staff understand, would be over a period of time, not the kinds of things, you know, trip and fall and things related to cords and so forth that we would address. We will be able to do that over time, Connie, and what we, you know, we have a plan for that, we have a priority in our business committee, our administrative team. So, I'm confident that'll be something that will not be able to be addressed.
Okay, so, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that we're taking a look as the kids cycle into the computers. Okay, so, in other words, what you're saying is the kids, as the kids cycle into the computers, they, at a certain level, they switch to another computer.
Correct.
So, you're saying, right now, we are looking into getting computers.
Yes.
Probably costs us more money.
Correct.
That have a better.
Yep.
Battery life.
Yes.
Okay? And that we're going to be looking at this cord issue, but we haven't, we didn't really address anything in the budget for this year about the cord issue.
For '23, '24? For '23, '24? Good, Scott, I'm sorry. You want to speak?
We do.
Good. Yeah, we do. Right. Yeah.
Okay, who would that be under in the presentation?
So, that would be in different supply accounts, and then in other funding that we have that rolls over from year to year, it's in our local grant funds.
Okay, that's great to hear. So, in other words, we're going to get computers with a better life stop.
Correct.
Life battery, so that the kids aren't charging it up every other period, and we're going to reduce the number of cords and trip and fall, kinds of things in the classroom because we have budgeted for it.
Great.
Okay, that's great to hear.
Because across the district, Connie, building levels have line item supply accounts. Content area supervisors have line item supply accounts. We have counts up at Central relative to that as well. So, the collective dollars associated with that, I believe we can build the capacity to address that.
That's great to hear. Last follow-up, Janine, I had sent a few questions, I understand you have answers for it. I know last week I asked what we budgeted for the insurance, you said between 11% and 12%, and I'm understanding that it did come in at 11%? Is that correct?
Yes.
What was the increase for last year? What percentage was the increase for last year?
Four, I believe, 4%.
It was 4%? And now it's 11%?
Yep.
Okay. Help me out with this. I know that there's contractual language that says equal to or better than in insurance, okay? How do we go about looking for other insurance companies? Okay, because that's a pretty steep increase, from 4% to 11 this year. Are we looking into another insurance company that might come in lower?
So, our broker does shop our insurance. We also, we did get quotes between last year and this year for joint insurance funds to see if that would benefit us, and it did not. And we also looked into self-insurance, which will not benefit us now because our experience did get worse recently, but we're hoping that that's an option for us next year. We're going to continue to explore that because that could be significant savings for us.
Okay, that's good to hear, that you're saying it's ongoing.
Yes.
Okay. The last question is 1%. I know you've always said that salaries and benefits is about 80% of our budget. What is 1% of the health cost? What does that equate in dollars? What's 1%?
I would have to get back to you on that, because I'd have to pull that out of this line.
Okay, all right, you'll get back to me. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I just have a really quick question. You said that we're getting two, or three new SLEOs.
Yes.
And you said that there'd be one in each building.
Correct.
So, we had three last year and three this year.
Correct.
We had three middle schools and six elementary schools. How is that one in each building?
Okay. We had two at the high school, right?
Right.
Then you had three at the middle level, right? And then you have seven elementary schools, so you had also one at the elementary schools prior to the additional six that we're getting. So, let's count that. Ready?
How was that six? It was three last year and then three this year, so.
But we also had existing SLEOs and SROs as well.
Okay. I just wanted to show that.
It was the number existing, the number existing, then when you, plus three. So, like, for example, this year, this year has a plus, two at the high school, one in each middle school, and then two, four, six at the eleme, no, four at the elementary, and then we have them on a schedule where they have sister schools, where we can spend 50% of the time and share that. When you add another three and you do the math.
Okay.
You have enough for each school having their own.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because for me, that's a priority, because last year, you know, I was really upset with the fact that they were sharing. So, thank you.
Correct. Thank Councilor.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on. I have School and Community Relations with Kathy Carey, please.
Thank you. The district will celebrate the achievements of the Washington Township High School class of 2023 during our annual graduation ceremony on Monday, June 12th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. on Tom Brown Field in the WTHS Stadium. Should we encounter inclement weather, the ceremony will be staged at the Republic Bank Performing Arts Center. We look forward to joining our proud families in acknowledging the class of 2023. The Washington Township High School Dance Department and Dance Company will present their 20th Annual Dance Concert, aptly entitled "20," on Thursday, April 27th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the school's Republic Bank Performing Arts Center. The milestone performance will showcase the talents of hundreds of high school students, and the evening will also feature the efforts of many returning high school alumni and the first-ever edition of the eighth-grade students from the Bunker Hill Middle School Dance Team. Tickets are $10 and $15, and all seating is reserved. Patrons are encouraged to purchase tickets in advance by visiting the RBPAC box office in the WTHS Core Lobby from Monday through Friday, 2:30 to 6:30 p.m. Remaining tickets will be available at the door for $15. And if you have any questions, please contact our high school dance teachers, Christina Richardson at CRichardson@WTPS.org, or Isa Jackson, EJackson@WTPS.org. And it's not too late to nominate a Washington Township High School graduate for consideration for the Military Hall of Honor. The 2023 induction ceremony will take place on Wednesday, May 31st, at 6:00 p.m. at the Washington Township High School in our Performing Arts Center. Please submit a five-by-seven color photo of the graduate in uniform. Information on the back of the photo should include the individual's name, year of graduation from the high school, branch of service, and rank. The submission also requires a copy of current military identification or honorable discharge paperwork. All submissions should be directed to Jan Gill, School Community Outreach Assistant at Washington Township Public Schools here at 206 East Holly Ave in Soul, New Jersey. We would like to announce that the upcoming DEIB convening event, originally scheduled for April 29th, has been rescheduled to July 13th. Furthermore, we are excited to share that the DEIB convening will now be held in partnership with the WTPS Special Education Parent Advisory Group, or CPAG. This collaboration will enable us to widen the scope of the event, enhance community engagement, and deliver a more comprehensive learning experience to all attendees. We firmly believe that this partnership will enrich our discussions and provide a more inclusive perspective on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We are thrilled to work with CPAG and leverage their expertise and insights for the benefit of the DEIB convening. We kindly request that you mark your calendars again for July 13th, and stay tuned for additional details and registration information. We're excited to see you there and appreciate your continued support for this essential initiative. Washington Township Public Schools seek local support as the district teams with American Bread Cross to host a blood drive on Wednesday, May 17th, from noon to 5:00, in the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building here at 206 East Holly Ave. Interested donors can register online by visiting redcrossblood.org and using the sponsor code WASHINGTONTownshipSchool, by calling 1-800-RED-CROSS, or by calling us here at 856-589-6644, extension 6550, to obtain an appointment. The Washington Township Education Foundation is gearing up for its annual golf classic. The event is scheduled for Monday, June 26th, at White Oaks Country Club. Please reach out to our WTEF president, Charlie Dowd, at 589-6644, extension 6581, if you're interested in golfing or providing a sponsorship. And finally, a very friendly reminder that our kindergarten registration for our 23-24 kindergarten class is open, and we encourage you to register now, if you've not done so already. You can visit us at WTPS.org and click on the yellow Student Registration button and complete the process completely online, or, if you prefer, you're welcome to make an appointment with our registrar, Matt Pacina, who is also doubling as our cameraman tonight, who is more than happy to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to correspondence. May I have a motion to approve the correspondence listed?
Mrs. Chilla, can I, real quick, I think, sorry, I just, I noticed one thing, I'm pretty sure the DEIB convening is July 20th, as opposed to the 13th. I just, I got the email and it was on my mind, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you. Kathy, can you just repeat again? It's going to be July 20th, it's the DEIB convening, and it also involves CPAG.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, thank you. Also, we have, I don't know if anybody can grab it, we have a set of keys in the front row that was left by an earlier presentation. So, if anyone's watching out there, we have a set of keys. Stacy, do you mind grabbing them? I'll put them up here. They're yours. Okay, we found the owner. All right, perfect.
That was easy.
He was hot.
I was sitting over there and I moved back.
That was a test.
Perfect, that was a test, for sure. Okay, thank you. Moving on to correspondence. May I have a motion to approve the correspondence listed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes listed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Old Business. Anybody have Old Business?
Yeah, this is for the solicitor. Probably about six or seven weeks, both the WTEA and the support group, we resolved the negotiations. Where are we in terms of getting the contract written and, you know, disseminated?
I can answer. I can answer. The contract, there are just a couple items that I have to talk to Mr. Schneider about, and then we'll have draft ready.
Okay. Do you have a timeline?
This week, I'm sure we'll be able to talk about.
Oh, okay, great, that's great.
I mean, for us to iron out what the questions are.
You're talking about both groups, WTEA and.
I'm sorry, so, WTEA is what I was just talking about. The support staff contract has already.
The support staff contract has already been sent to their union leadership for review.
Okay.
Yeah, and it was reviewed by our team already.
The second thing, um, I believe, and this is from Mr. McGee. I believe the board did approve the recommendation of the Business Committee for retired teachers to receive two hundred dollars a day for, um.
You did.
As substitutes?
Yes, you did.
Okay, and, and that's happening now?
If any retirees were to be secured for our buildings, the answer would be yes.
Right, I mean, right now?
Correct.
We have, okay.
Yeah, and, and we recently had a meeting with our rep for ESS, and, you know, that was confirmed as well, where, relative to where we are. So yeah, you had approved that several months ago.
Okay, yeah, okay. And I know that one of the things that was brought up in the committee meeting was with that company, that when we had a retired teacher, they wouldn't have to go through all the hoops. I think, I think Mrs. Clancy had brought that up.
Yeah.
So has that been resolved?
Yes, when we met with Mr. Engel recently, we had a meeting, Jeanne and I and a few others, Sharon, before Sharon had left, and we went through a process where he indicated that process can move quickly, and they have a process to expedite that, yes.
Okay, then the, the last question on that, I thought there was some discussion about how we're going to reach out to our retired teachers because someone approached me today and asked me that there has, that person wondered, are there, is there information that has gone out to our retired teachers that we are doing this? This person seems to think it has not been done. But I know we talked about it, and if we, and if you did do it, what is it?
I'll defer to Jeanne on that, that answer.
I don't know that.
Okay. We'll get back to you, knowing that Sharon has, you know, been since retired, so if you can allow us to get that back to you as early as tomorrow, not the next day, okay?
Okay, so you'll get back to me on what we're doing about that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I do have a question. How did they modify hiring retired teachers? I'd like to know. And I have a couple of retired teachers that would be interested also. I mean, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be subbing, but I know they would be interested.
In talking to Brian, if he would indicate the challenge to move through the process is making sure you, in a sense, walk people through the process, things that they have to complete online, sign off and the like, and if you allow it without any bothering and, and getting them into the building and getting it done, that can, that can take a time. So that process, more than anything else in terms of a delay, is one that they feel confident.
So I'm going to ask, do they still have to watch five videos and take five quizzes?
Five videos and five quizzes, I will get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? No? All right. Motion to open to the public for public comment as well as on the budget. So public comment in general, and then comments on the budget.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. We are open, I have one card, but I see more coming in.
And ladies and gentlemen, just to be clear, this is the public comment, public hearing on the budget as well.
Okay, on the budget as well.
In addition to whatever else you have, but this is the public hearing on the budget.
Okay, I'm going to read the card I have so far in front of me. Sheila Mickelson?
Hello, my name is Sheila Mickelson, and I'm the Director of the Margaret Hagan Free Public Library of Washington Township. And I'm here today because we're celebrating National Library Week. And we recently kicked off our strategic planning process. We're urging everyone to help us plan for the library's future by completing our community survey. It's available on our website at haganelibrary.org, and we're passing out bookmarks because we love bookmarks at the library. There's a QR code on there, so you can just scan it to take our survey. I just want to mention a few things about the library. A lot of people don't realize that anyone who works for the school system, they don't have to be a teacher, just any employee can get a free library card. And we're open seven days a week, four of the days we're open till nine. We are one of the only libraries south of Trenton open on Sundays in the summer, so we're pretty busy on Sundays in the summer. And some of the things that we offer, physical items, we have eighty-four thousand books, eleven thousand movies, four thousand audiobooks, three thousand music CDs, and a thousand magazines. We also have twenty-four passes to area museums in New Jersey, Delaware, and Pennsylvania that may be barred for three days. We have twenty-eight thousand streaming movies, eighteen thousand eBooks, eight thousand e-audiobooks, and five thousand e-magazines. Been working in public libraries since 1995, and a lot of people ask me, how do you compare school libraries and public libraries? Well, we really serve people from cradle to grave, so we've got programming for babies to senior citizens. So that's kind of how we're different from school libraries. We have access to, we have librarians at a reference desk all the time for help with research. We have seventy-two databases, and if there are any of the world language teachers here, we have a database called Mango Languages, so of course we have French, Spanish, but we also have Pirate, so. Anybody wants to learn Pirate, we have access to Pirate, which is always fun during Talk Like a Pirate Day.
I've totally done that at school.
Talk Like a Pirate Day. All right, um, if you haven't been to the building, it's right over there. See it from here practically? It's a twenty thousand square foot building with an ample parking lot, spaces for studying and reading, we have a computer lab, there are twenty-eight public access computers throughout the building, as well as touchscreens for very young children. We have a meeting room that can be used by nonprofit groups. We are kicking off our summer reading program for all ages on June 12th. That was intentional, when you change the date of your last day of school, we changed the date of our summer reading program. So please come and visit us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sheila, thank you. The one thing you didn't mention is that if you don't have the book, that you do arrange to get the book from another library. So I just wanted to add that because I, I have had, I have had to do that. If you don't have the book in your library, you will get it for us from another library. You did mention that, and that's wonderful, too. All right, Ms. Watson? Ms. Watson?
Sorry, she was telling me how great my staff is, thank you.
No worries, no worries.
They helped me. I had to leave this area to go to another area so that my kids could learn because, like I said, bullying and biases was here. Those ladies at that library helped me with my children to study. They were wonderful. They understood, and they really did help me. They would get me books that I truly needed, and they also sent out to other communities to get me books to help my children. I swear to you, not, they were wonderful. They were truly good. And I had to leave, I could not do it, but I went to another, I had to leave my home here to move to another community, and that's why I'm here. Every month, as much as I can, to make sure what happened to my kids will never, ever happen to anyone. You have PhDs and you want to laugh? Laugh, laugh at me because I'm going to stand here until I make sure that no one will ever have to go through what I had to go through with my kids. You should have, right now, preschool education for every child in this communication, uh, community. I'm sorry, community. Not one child, not one, in this community should not be able to go to preschool. I used to argue with them about preschool, argue at a full-time kindergarten, every year. I, I have been here for over twenty years, I have argued with them. I've taken you to court because of your bias and bullying. And you see what happened to some of these people that are biased and bullied against? They go crazy. That's why so many people are doing drugs. And mass incarceration is about you not allowing other people to be able to get an education that's equivalent because today you basically should have some type of college. And I'm going to say you should definitely have a bachelor's degree with the prices of the hell. You can't get a quality job in America unless you are very well-trained. They go, there's a few exceptions, but I'm telling you, it's very hard out here. And in order to live in Washington Township in a decent community without being a beggar or a borrower, you have to have a quality education. It starts at the second preschool all the way up. You need to stop having so many special educational programs and make an inclusive program that allows all people to be able to have access to a quality learning. Some of the kids that you place in special education should never be there. Never. Ending real racism is about being intelligent. And you can't be intelligent if you're still stifling people, classifying people, separating people. You even separate, listen, you even separate us from African-Americans to other African-Americans. You like some and then not like the other. I hope you never like me. But when you die and you go to the God above, you find that what I've been telling you, because I want you to make sure you know before you die that you are classifying people that should not be classified. You are stifling the education of other people so you can say, na 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 boo boo, I have better than you, when you can simply educate them from the very beginning so that they don't get caught up in all of this crazy, hateful, biased, bullying. And you have a lot of kids here that are not African-American who will say the exact same thing. End it. See, some of you can't even look at me because you can remember when we had tapes that showed the racism. And I always think my Italian joke is not about me harming someone, but my Italian joke is about when I heard Italian men tell me about pure racism because they're some of the honest, most open men, not because they were racist. They were telling me about the racism. Rape, rob, pillage, plundering, that's not me doing to them. That's what some men did to oppress other people and cause a lot of the hatred that we see today because there's some people that's going to say, I'm struggling too. But I have to say, I have to say, I'm seeing that a lot of people are getting stuck in the separation because you want to pull each other apart. Start young, little kids, they're not racist. They're trained to be racist, and it starts with young moms and young teachers at this level, because you're the best of the best, at your level, to end it. And it's going to be hard, you're not going to like what some people are going to say, but you can't have a conversation in a lie.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. We have a second public comment if you'd like to come back up.
Yes, please make sure that you do something about.
Donald, Donald Kerr?
I have a question about the technology equipment item. I think somebody had asked this question a couple of weeks back. It's for the one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars. I think the response was it was for, for switches, was it networking switches? And then last week when I was here, somebody had brought up, an ex-principal had brought up, like, AI security systems. I was just wondering if that one million dollar, one hundred, one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of technology purchases, if that included any type of AI surveillance system for the school.
I would just caution the board on mentioning anything related to security, protocols, procedures, equipment, et cetera.
Because it seems like we're spending an awful lot of money on technology, but yet cutting people. And I think that those dollars should be spent on people.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Tom Boldisaro?
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Last meeting, correct?
Sir, is my final meeting, yes, in Washington Township Public Schools, sir.
Say, say goodbye to you again. Will there be another one? Can you share? Good luck, thank you for both times you served for us, thank you very much.
So I would say my thanks goes equally to you, sir, because you're a person who listens to every word, and you're profound and dynamic, and you care deeply, and that's so self-evident. So I thank you for all that you have provided me, for us, and the insights and the critical analysis that I know makes us better when we internalize it and take it to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. You, you never said that when you were staying here, but I'm just. But, thank you. Just going to share a little news, we have nine kids in Orlando right now at DECA. Two of those students made the finals, they competed today. One of them being my daughter, so I'm going to brag a little bit. Thank you. We are anxiously awaiting to find out the results. I know the first one was a young man, he, his results are coming first, but hopefully, maybe we'll have a national winner, who knows? But thank you to Mrs. Ackley, she does a phenomenal job of running that program. She really deserves a lot of recognition, her organization skills, her, it's just, it's been phenomenal for all the students. So, thank you, Mrs. Ackley. And then just a couple of questions on the budget. Ms. Wechter, you put fund balance, and I, I think from the description you made, it sounded like that's more like savings from prior times. And then you mentioned that, you know, you want to be careful not to use that to fund your operations, which, again, makes sense. But the problem is, couldn't really tell because you did great detail on revenue, but there was really nothing on expenses, so we never got to see total expenses, never got to, to see whether or not you truly held that. I mean, there's a hundred and sixty-two million, including the ten and a half for fund balance. Is your expense budget a hundred and fifty-two million ballpark? I mean, that kind of shares. I hope you all saw more detail on the expense side. We got six elementary schools, hopefully we saw comparisons to make sure we're staffing similar, consistent. And that's the stuff I would like to see, staffing, you know, per building, enrollment, per school, per, you know, again, I know I supplied a, a file a while back about ratios and things, do you see that? You know, you ask a question about we're getting rid of staff, but the enrollment went from ten thousand down to whatever. How do we compare seven years ago in staffing to what we do now, like you did the revenue? That stuff would have been very valuable to see, it would have kind of maybe helped some of what, you know, Scott, what you said about how, you know, we're reducing to match enrollment. Are we? You know, again, it'd be good to see information like that, but, you know, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. I have Patricia Klein.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say, Connie, you stole all my questions. Thank you so much for asking the questions. But I have a concern about the stabilization aid. We met maybe two months ago, and we went over the tentative budget, and never did we hear that there was a potential of a million dollars. No one ever mentioned it until I asked the question about the million dollars. So I have a question for you because I think people are starting to at least believe there's some deception. We're being deceived. If you are not telling us how you're spending our money, and that million dollars belongs to us, we're taxpayers, whether you get it from the state or you get it from the federal government, it still is our money. And it would have been nice to have known that. We need more transparency as far as the money. And that just piggybacks on more transparencies in the budget, which was just mentioned. But I wanted to ask a question. I looked at the budget and it says, challenges of creating a budget, and one of the challenges happens to be staff shortage. But now you're cutting twenty-seven more staff members, twenty-seven more. So you already have a challenge, but you're going to cut more? I think the staff people are more important than a floor, and that was something that Connie mentioned. The floor, eight hundred thousand, why aren't we using that for the staff? Also, I see here, challenges of creating a budget. Trans. Transportation increases. Well, if we're going from 11,000 students to 71,000, the ratio to student to, I think, teacher is 11 to one. I looked at that. I just looked at that information. But if we're less students, why are we increasing transportation? Good questions. Everyone in here should be asking questions. I don't hear any questions, but questions coming from Connie, why? Number two, a couple of other questions. When we agreed to take the almost $1 million, which we, in the meeting, the tentative budget meeting, I was told we definitely would take this budget, we would take that money, a million dollars. Question, are there strings attached? Because they decreased our money and then they allowed us to come back and apply for a million dollars. My question, what kind of strings are attached? There are strings attached because they would not decrease and then allow you to add to unless they wanted something from you. What is it that they want if they do want something from you? Thank you.
Just to be fair, you still have a minute and 45 seconds left.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Oh, I was rushing, sorry.
So no, good.
Thank you for allowing my minute. But just to reiterate, staff shortage, 27, we're cutting 27. I want to know, why can't the money be used for staff? People are more important. There was a question here also about AI, artificial intelligence. If we're using that money for artificial intelligence, I think we need to use that money for people. Because artificial intelligence is taking people over and eliminating people. We don't want to eliminate people. 27 you cut. And I want to just ask that question once again. Data aid, it's called the stabilization aid. Question, are there strings attached and what strings are attached? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll start off with the stabilization aid. We didn't have any information when we prepared the tentative budget, which was why in the meantime, we got guidance about how to incorporate it into our public hearings. And there's a special application that we have to do. As far as the, let's see, the staffing and mentioning the challenges, I understand what you're saying, but yet we're cutting. So the reason why I had that on the slide is because it's challenging to budget if you do have staffing shortages because normally we would know who our people are, we would know who we need, and we would know what their salaries would be. Where now we're kind of filling the gaps with either substitutes, which, you know, the rates can vary depending on year to year with other staff members who have free periods and covering. So that was just an overall budget challenge for projection purposes. And as far as cutting the staff, I also understand what you're saying there, but as I mentioned, every year we analyze our staff. And with our enrollment declining, every department does have to take a look at that. So we, when we look, for example, at our elementary buildings and how many section, we look at projected enrollment and how many sections we need. So if we, you know, have X amount of sections, but one or two more teachers, we have to figure out what to do there. So the funding, as I mentioned, is not coming back. So to hang on to staff members that we may or may not need and definitely can't sustain doesn't make good budgeting sense. As far as transportation, the overall, so it's been a challenge the past couple of years because you, just as an example, if we're using a contractor, maybe two or three years ago, if we put a route out to bid for a couple of out of district students, the rate per day might be $150. The rates now could be 300, 350, $400 per day for a handful of kids on one bus. So that's why it's challenging. And not only that, the other reason is because, because of the staffing shortages all over the place, we're having trouble getting our own drivers and covering our, covering our own routes. So then if we try to use a contractor, their prices are increased and they're having trouble getting staffing as well. So it was kind of an overall budget issue because it's hard to project. And then you mentioned strings attached. There's no strings attached. It's just not coming back. That's the best way I could answer that.
And I can answer the question, Ms. Klein, about why only questions from Connie? So four of the members of the board were in the budget committee meeting where we asked extensive questions. The other members of the board were emailed the budget today to review. The budget meeting was last night. And then once the presentation was completed, it was emailed out to the board members this afternoon. It gives the board members the opportunity to then ask questions if they would like to prior to the meeting. I'm just going to give a quick example, Scott, I'll just use you. So typically Scott has a number of questions on the agenda that comes out. And there may be a little bit of back and forth and clarifications that are necessary. He chooses to ask a lot of those questions via email. And then sometimes if he feels appropriate, I'm not speaking like you're not here, I'm just using you as an example, may want to reiterate those questions that he had because it would benefit others to hear. Some members of the board don't do that. They'll ask their questions and that's it. They'll ask them before the meeting. What I will tell you is that there were some questions on the agenda this evening that actually caused an item to be pulled and put back into committee because there were so many questions about it. So oftentimes what you may see is that everyone's asking the questions because they were already answered. Some members want to repeat them, which is their option. But I want to let you know that there were several questions on the budget. It's just Connie wanted to choose to say them at a meeting, which is perfectly fine. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Thank you for your comments.
Patricia, also, as Connie had articulated, and you've heard Janine as well, and other members of the board in the process related to the state's decision six plus years ago to move in this initiative relative to funding that would have been attributed to us, they would say, had received funding that was maybe in excess when our enrollments were much larger. And now it's like a backwards retroactive reduction in aid, right? So in doing so, when you have these kinds of dollars, particularly this year, it does force you to take an absolute very strong critical eye to how your staff in all areas, including central, in terms of where we are with our numbers, and absolutely look at the kind of dollars we're spending in salary, right? So it did force us to do that. As a reminder, and Janine reviewed this on one of our slides, no cut in programming, no reduction in courses of study. Everything remains. So that, that process to give you confidence was part of our goal and we met that goal because we don't have courses coming off the books or courses or reduction in programs, even though you see the number of staff that you have articulated in that. Okay? Thank you.
Mary Ben.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
And Jack, on some of those, like a reduction might be a position that's not filled, right?
Correct.
Just elimination of a position.
Correct.
We still have other positions we're hiring for that we can't fill.
Correct.
Right? So like there's a lot of stuff going on there. It's not just, you know.
And positions also not associated with folks that work directly in a classroom. Okay? Directly in the classroom with kids in front of us.
So Mary Ben, I just wanted, it's about the transparency. Tom brought it up, Pat's brought it up. The questions that we're hearing from Connie or Scott or anybody that mentions things here at the board, that's the transparency that we see. You know, the explanations look great, but there was more on one side than the other. We don't know where the expenses are really going, the details that you had for what, you know, is coming in. That's what transparency is about. We are the taxpayers. We deserve those answers. I understand that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, but we also know that there were a lot of problems and that's why some people are gone because there was a lot going on behind the scenes that weren't transparent and deals are being made or being cut. So if you continue down the path where, well, they're all asked via email, then we don't talk here because we all talk behind the scenes, then that's not showing the taxpayers and the people that come here and ask these questions, anything. And a lot of times some questions are asked and there are no answers. Tom asked a valid question and you didn't give him an answer. Why is it spelt out where the money's coming in or the shortages? What's going out? Why isn't there more details? How things are costing, where it's going to? I mean, I know that's a lot more work. I'm sure it is. So it's transparency and that's why people come. We continue to come. People are watching on TV. They want to know. It's our tax dollars. We want to know where it's being spent. So thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mary. Noted. I, I can't agree more. I think that's one of the, maybe not posted board goals, but in terms of being transparent. I just want to make a follow-up comment about questions being asked. So oftentimes, again, they're asked because if there's a lot of questions on something, we will pull it and put it back. That's the reason why. It's not necessarily because we don't want to ask it in public. It's just a matter of just, as we collate the questions that come in, if there's an item and it happened tonight. So that's really the spirit of it. Anyone is free to ask their questions in public. I would prefer that we ask the questions and get them out so we can make good decisions together as a board. But it's just the comfort level of the board member. Sometimes they just want clarification and they'll ask it through an email and not in public. But by and large, that's the reason. That was the spirit of why I brought it up, but your comment is noted and I agree. So thank you.
Karen Stitt.
Yeah.
Isn't this the advertised budget in addition to the presentation? That's available to the public as well? That's advertised as well, right?
It should be.
Yes, that, yes, that's required.
Is that in the packet that they got too?
It is on the, attached to the agenda.
It's attached to the agenda, not in the handout, correct?
Um, no, not in the handout.
All right. So that is available and it has more information on budget and expenses and stuff like that. I don't know if you saw that, Tom. Just wanted to point that out. Is it in addition to that?
Board docs.
It's in Board Docs.
But it's not here for the, it's not here for the order of expenses, I think is the question.
It's not hard copy.
Right.
They have access to it. That's why.
So if you go into Board Docs where the electronic agenda is, it would be under B, Presentations, number four, Presentations of the 2023, 2024 School Budget. And there's an attachment B4A, which is the advertised budget. It's a PDF. It's several pages and it has much more detail. The presentation was kind of more of the high level items. You can dig into that detail if you want.
Was that posted?
It's posted, yes.
Today. It would have been today, I think.
That would have been on Fri-, you know, on Friday when the agenda was released. And the, the actual, that document is what we send to the newspaper for them to proof and we're required to advertise that at least four days prior to the public hearing.
Connie, go ahead.
Yeah, so it would have been.
Maybe I missed it. When you were saying a lot of questions came in and something was taken off. Are you allowed to say what was taken off because I don't recall that?
Yep, there was an item in Instructional Affairs. When we get to that, I can certainly, all right, I could talk about it now. There was an item in Instructional Affairs that there were questions that came in talking about credit for intervention. And we wanted to put that back in committee to talk about what that would look like on a transcript and other things. So that's the reason why.
And I sent the board, the full board, an email about that. If you check it, you got the email earlier.
I was in Memphis and I got the email.
Yeah, I had sent an email out earlier today when that decision was made. So it was pulled back and go back to committee, go back to Instructional Affairs. So I did send an email.
Yeah, where was I? Was everyone's questions answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I just, just want to mention this too. Just so that the public understands it. We got information afternoon on the budget and maybe we get an email during the day. It doesn't mean that board members are out there at their, you know, computer all day long looking for stuff.
Understood.
So it's, it's very possible you miss it, that's all.
Yeah, oh, completely understood, absolutely.
So I'll do a final comment on this so we can move on with the agenda. It has been a recommendation and an ask of the new, for the new superintendent who is with us here, that we begin to put items up much earlier on the public domain. So when you're all here, you have access to it. Pretty much when we get access, that you'll have access. So then that way, as you create your questions for the meeting, you can email in, you can come here, you know, not everyone can come to the meeting. They may want to email in a question about it. So that is a goal for us to put things up earlier on the website and a lot easier like to access because Board Docs isn't the easiest thing to access when you're sitting here in the room either. So we have some things that we're working on so that you do have those items much earlier than walking into the room and grabbing a packet and then trying to figure out and scramble what you want to ask and what things look like. Okay? Motion to close with public? All right. A motion to approve the report of the superintendent, items one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
A couple of questions.
Sure.
On H5, the calendar, school calendar. I know it's been looked at a million ways to Sunday and I was one that pressed for us going back after Labor Day. I did get some people raise some concerns just about when standardized testing is and we're going to have fewer days to prep. I assume that was kind of talked through and not found to be a concern. We're still going to have same, same number of instructional type days prior to that testing.
Part of the call that we had from our public, other members of our collective staff across the district, members of our board, our leaders was to move what we had been doing recently, maybe in the last six years where our students came in for a day or so prior to Labor Day weekend and move it back to the other side of Monday, which we did. And in evaluating whether the impact that we had on testing was such that we would keep it there, I would say no. And I think the manner in which we have organized ourselves relative to our curriculum, a new product relative to how we're going to provide our pacing guides, benchmark our assessments, have consistent assessments across to our district K-12 schools and the like, I think we'll be in a better position next year relative to how we are organized academically, curriculally, and how we assess and learn from those assessments and then chart the course of instruction after that better than we have in quite some time under some leadership that we have going on by Dr. Hiz and his folks in terms of a research with our curriculum department, special education department and our leaders across the district. So I think we'll be in a good place, Scott, and I think the results will be fruitful over time. I would be very confident in that.
Great, thank you, Jack.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Plansey?
Yes.
Ms. Demah?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
All right, under Instructional Affairs, motion to approve items one through five.
I just have a question on number one.
Can I just do the motion real quick and then we'll do discussion? No worries. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just have a question about number one. I have a problem with it, but how does that figure as far as money? Because if you have a committee, the committee gets paid. So I just want to know, how does that work?
I'm going to turn it over to the chair. Kathleen, do you have any, a response or should we give it to Jennifer?
Was that already figured into the budget? That's what I believe was, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Just wanted to go over here and give this question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I just have one on the, I for the STEM program, summer STEM program, which I think sounds awesome. Getting kids to be able to be exposed to working with AI and stuff like that, that's great. And that's ESAR funded, correct? Just want to confirm that that is ESAR funded, right?
I am not, Steve, I'm not sure about that one.
So it's funded by an ESAR sub-grant for evidence-based learning acceleration in, in STEM for the summer. And it's run by, it was invented by a Stanford PhD that we've been in touch with. We saw a program, made arrangements, and we'd like to launch it this year.
And Scott, so you know, if you look on the last page, the account numbers under those three items of the dollar figures, the last two numbers that you the last two numbers that you see with the zero-zero indicate ESSR. So you know that, okay?
Yep. I had, I had a question about that too. So it's, it looks like it's limited to, at our budget right now, the numbers, it's limited to eighteen students, is what I saw, right?
Yeah, those are the parameters of the, of the institute that run, the camp, they call it a camp, that runs it. They, they only run cohorts of six students, age thirteen or higher. So we budgeted for three cohorts, six each. A virtual instructor is on one end, four days a week, with a teacher, one of our employees supervising in person, and Friday is asynchronous with the virtual instructor from home.
Do we know what, I don't, I don't know. I would think that more than eighteen students would be interested in thirteen and older. Is there like a contingency plan, or like what would the application process look like if there's two?
After tonight's approval, I have an email ready to launch that will solicit support from students to see what the level of interest is. They are sort of an new company, new initiative. They can handle a, a lot of demand, so we, we want to just see what we have. In the budget, we have X amount in the sub-grant we can spend. We can't support more than eighteen students currently. So we'd have to find a way, if this is successful, to fund it moving forward.
Thank you.
Steve, that was my next question about how successful and then moving forward, if they could increase the number like the following summer.
Yeah, but this, this is highly technical. Th- these are going to be students who already have a facility with coding. They are creating their own personalized application in, in three weeks. So it's, it's, it's really the, the highly proficient students we're targeting here, and I'll know better once we have the survey launched.
Thank you.
Sure.
Steve, who picks the students?
Well, it's going to be an, an interest survey, Connie, so we'll see what the response is, and then I'll take, you know, ownership of what, of that, and we'll go from there. Once they see the details of it, you know, how some will express interest, and then they'll find out.
Yeah, just wondering if you have a, a, a big demand. Who knows? You may not, okay?
I don't anticipate a huge demand, but I think we'll fill the eighteen seats.
It wouldn't be like a lottery system like we do for the kids going into the preschool.
I hope not.
Alright, thanks.
Any more discussion on this? Hearing none. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Motion to approve policy, second readings, items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a, I have a question for Adam. Items one and two, liability for student welfare. The first, like the first name, it's teaching staff members. Am I conflicted on that? Like, can I, do I have to stay out of that policy also, or?
No, I would, I would say that you are not conflicted from voting on a policy. This one in particular, liability for student welfare. I would say that you are not conflicted from that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion points? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Alright, motion to approve student activities and communications, items one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Alright, hearing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Motion to approve human resources, items one through thirty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, in terms of just some call-outs, and Scott made a great point that we should probably do this every time we have retirements. I just want to call out that we'll be approving Ms. Cheryl Daughth, Daughth, from TJ, thank you. Thirty-four years retiring. Amazing. Ms. Kathy Bennett from Whitman, twenty-six years. Ms. Diane Stevens from Whitman, twenty-two years. Ms. Maria Horner, specialized instructionalist, then birches, eleven years. So, just a quick round of applause. Amazing. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Alright. Any other discussion on human resources, items one through thirty-six? Hearing, oh.
Just, just so everyone knows, I'm going to abstain from item number nineteen, which is the salary adjustment for teaching staff, because my wife is a teacher.
Thank you. Alright, roll call.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes, everything except for nineteen, abstain.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Alright, there's no items for special education, nothing for negotiations. I'm going to start with new business, and I'd like, oh, did I miss finance?
Yeah, you missed a big one, I think.
That was a big one to miss.
That was a big one to miss.
My bad. Okay. Motion to, motion to approve finance, items one through thirty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
That would have been bad. Discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple of those.
Yes.
You guys start?
Yeah, guess, Scott.
So M six on the warrant bill list. Just saw there were three law firms on there that were paying still, K-Part, Flanagan, Parker McKay. And my understanding is that is, well, K-Part's cleanup of old cases, right? Little stuff from prior months?
Prior months.
Okay. And then Flanagan and Parker McKay are, we're using insurance, but we got to pay like the first?
Yeah, so, so they are cases that were assigned through our insurance, and we pay the first five thousand.
So we pay directly to them for the first five thousand?
Correct. Then they start-
Insurance pays them?
Yep. They'll send us invoices for information purposes, but they also send them the insurance and they're paid.
So then we won't, once we hit the five thousand cap, we won't see them on the warrant bill list?
Correct.
Per case, so you may see them later on, to the extent they're assigned later for some other matter. But for each claim, insurance claim, your deductible's five thousand dollars. So you'll see bills for each insurance defense firm up to five thousand dollars. After the five thousand on each claim, you'll get it, you'll get the invoice for informational purposes.
Okay. Alright, thanks. And then, I'm just wondering if that's something we should just discuss at business, in business committee about, is it better financially feasible for us to use the insurance? Or to do it on our own? Because I'm guessing like our premiums probably are going to-
I'm, I'm very happy to talk to you about that offline. I have quite a bit of experience in that area.
Alright, great. So I'll talk to you, then we'll talk about it in business?
Yep.
Does that sound good?
Yep, I can add it. Sean.
Going back to the K-Part, so what do we still have open with them? Are they done? Like the, the cases that they're still working on for us, are they complete?
They're minor cases, almost complete. One that we, and, and what was on the bills, this was three months. It was actually January, February, and March. One of the larger cases is, is done.
So when do you think will be like, they'll, they'll be closed down on there?
I couldn't speak to that right now, but I can get an update.
Sure.
Because some of them are not directly like my department, so I, I'd have to get an update.
Okay, alright, so, don't know.
I agree. If we can get an update on that, that we can discuss next meeting, or before.
And then I also want the warrant bill, there's extra duty solutions. Is that, is that like a security company, like?
Yeah, that, that is actually for the police department. It's just the service that they use for us to book them when we need them.
Oh, so that's actually Washington, Washington County?
Yeah.
Sean.
Oh, yeah, when, when items twenty-one and twenty-eight, I noticed that we have two separate companies that are doing the maintenance on the elevators. Could we try to condense that down to one company instead of using two separate entities?
One of the companies is for Chestnut. One of the companies is for Chestnut Ridge, Orchard Valley, and the high school. The other company is for Bunker Hill, and it's, they have a specific elevator that's serviced by a specific company. So that's why. But they are bid.
There's, and the, but the one that Otis has, Otis has, like, they're the only ones that can work on the one piece deal. For East Coast.
Alright, okay.
The M seventeen, which is the long-range facility plan that we're, oh, you got it too? Alright, look at that. We're proving for the engineers to prepare and amend. There's, you said, there's no cost associated with things?
Yeah, so I can explain that. So, and I'll tie in eighteen. So with specific capital projects, especially if it's the level where we need engineering services, it has things to do with like modifying the building, there are specific paperwork for each capital project that we're required to submit to the state. So it's like standard forms. So the one resolution, anytime we have a project like that, just like anything else you see us do, we're, we're, you know, approval to submit a grant application. Anytime you submit something to the state, it requires a board resolution, so that's all part of the process. When we sign off on all those forms, this resolution goes up. As far as the long-range facility plan, that gets updated every so often. But what we have to do is, if we're working on a project and sending the paperwork up to the state, we also ask permission to amend the plan, and really all that is, is until we're required to do another official update, it's kind of on a side list that, okay, here's the last time we updated our plan, but then these are other projects that we submitted in the meantime. So it's like a formality that, just the filing of the state paperwork, that would happen regardless.
And the, when you're going to do an amendment to a long-range facility plan, it's usually done by the board's architect or engineer, the ones that have to submit those plans.
Connie?
I have a question on the Brett Danovi and Associates, two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred forty-seven fifty. Is that just for one month?
No, Connie, that's not. That's for multiple, that's, that's still like, that's community.
It's two months?
That's not just one month.
Any other questions?
M twenty is a bid renewal for B-Safe, the security company, I believe, Fire Large. So is that, that's just a renewal of the previous contract?
Yes, so we bid that out last year with the option to renew, and so this is the first renewal.
Is that on an RFP schedule?
Yes, bid schedule. That, that, this is bid, not RFP.
Bid schedules, I'm sorry, bid schedules for how, is it like a three-year?
Um, we usually do for, for things like this, five years.
Five years?
But we don't have to renew every year. So if there's a specific reason why we wouldn't want to renew, or if there's a significant increase, we don't have to.
And then the only other thing I have is on the construction list, there is an item for Epic Enviro, which is an asbestos company.
What number is that?
M eight. Construction bill list.
Yep.
Professional services, what, what are we doing? Like, what is that for?
So we, I, I, I would have to look that up, and I may have to get back to you. However, that's a company that we use for a couple of things. So we have to keep certain plans, and where there might be areas that they get updated every six months, a year, there's a cycle that they have to come in and update. It could be that. Also, if we're doing flooring projects, they would have to come in and do some remediation first.
Thank you.
Sure.
One more?
Yep, no.
I'm done.
You're done? Okay. You done, one more.
But I didn't skip it.
The, this, M thirty-one, this, the senior class trip.
What number was that? I'm sorry.
M thirty-one. So it's the bids for like the senior trip to like Disney, and there was two options, right? Like it was Disney or the other one's at Universal, I believe, right? Prices are about the same. I think we're recommending going to Universal again. What, what are like issues with Universal or anything like that? Do we have any concerns going back to the Universal environment?
I can mention, because I'm part of that senior cabinet, you know, the high school cabinet, I know that a couple of the kids mentioned that the shuttle would take them to a short hop, but yet they were, the shuttle wasn't there for them for the long distance, and they had to walk, they had a, had a great distance to walk. So I think that's something we need to look at and make sure that doesn't happen again. I'm just putting it out there because of the Disney or the Universal one.
We happen to have a few experts in the room about the senior class trip. So, I'm going to defer, I would defer to the experts that are sitting out in the audience of what we should do. Great questions for sure, but I'm just going to not even attempt because I'm sure that they, they have their reasons why they want to go to one or the other, having that experience. I'm assuming yes, right? Still a great question, call-outs, but. Okay, alright. Any other discussions? No.
Yes, I got one.
Okay.
Number thirty-five. Will we be getting any kind of written report? Thirty-five.
Yes. So for M thirty-five, there will be something submitted to us with the accounted days and exactly what happened on those days in terms of an agenda.
Yeah, when we had the original discussion, I had asked for that. We're going to be approving it without it. That's what you're saying right now?
Yeah, you don't have to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I just want to make a quick request. I believe that this goes into business possibly, maybe, Janine. If we could just get the board a schedule of the RFPs. I really don't have great knowledge as to like, when do we go out for this? When is this up? You know, in the next year, what's going to be up for an RFP? Just so we can get an understanding. And then that way, we can, although it will be in an agenda, I'd like to know if it's coming up. You know, when do we go for the engineer bid, like law, like all of those things? What does that cycle look like? So it, I don't, no need to answer now, but just something that if we could put it in, I guess, business would make the most sense. And you can present that back to the board hopefully in May, just so we understand what's coming up.
Why can't we know now? Because it may be coming up.
So I think I mentioned this in another meeting, the RFP schedule for professionals will be talked about at the May Business Committee meeting.
Gotcha.
So you know what's coming up, and, and then we can also talk about anything additional that, you know, you guys may be interested in. But as far as bids, as you know, we do have a lot, you know, on, almost every single agenda, there's various bids, but I'm happy to make up a schedule. So you're talking about professionals as well as bids for like services like this.
Just so we have an idea.
Sure.
If you're already doing it, that's great. I just, I'd like to have a more robust discussion so I could better understand. You know, how often is there, one sec, Ralph. How often is the rotation for legal services? Is it every year? You know, how often do we go out for the engineers? I just, I don't have that knowledge. So I would just like to understand what that's, those cycles look like. You know, how often do we go out for the engineers, I just, I don't have that knowledge, so I would just like to understand what that's, those cycles look like. And then also what we have coming up do in twenty-three, twenty-four, so we understand, but go ahead, Ralph.
Who, who makes, who makes the cycles? In other words, how we, don't we go out every year for RFPs?
Um, we have a policy that has, it's a three-year cycle, but we do, uh, we do look at it as a board. Um, because the board does have the ability to say, okay, well, these are the three, these are the ones that are up this year on the three-year cycle. But maybe the board decides um to add, add an additional one that maybe had gone out two years prior or one year prior. So that is discussed every year because you can, as a board, stray away from that policy and recommend additional ones or, or not as many.
Well, how, how often are we to a three-year contract?
We aren't.
So in other words, we have a three-year RFP on, say, the attorney, and we want to talk about the attorney or change the attorney, and we can send an RFP out there.
Correct, correct, the policy just is like a, a cycle just for um, you know, a rec- a recommendation, but like I said, we do talk about it annually.
The only thing I would say is, to the extent the board wants to stray from the policy, you can absolutely do that, you just need to mention that when you're doing it in public.
Yes.
So that the, so that both the board members and the members of the public are aware that we're straying from the policy. But the board can absolutely, on its own, decide to deviate from the policy, they just have to announce that they're doing so at a public meeting.
Quick, quick question with regards to that, is it beneficial that we amend the policy, so we just have flexibility in general, instead of saying we have to deviate from the policy? Then someone has to remember, which will probably be me, that I have to remember that we're deviating from the policy, so can we amend the policy? I mean, I know we can, but is that?
You absolutely can amend the policy to say something like, or shorter, should the board decide to do so, or something like that. You can build in to the policy language your own flexibility, if you will, there's nothing that would hold you back from doing that.
So if it's, show of hands, is the board okay with amending that policy, so we have flexibility for that?
It, it also goes without saying that you have the flexibility anyway, but if you want to announce that you have the flexibility, you certainly can do that.
Okay, so why don't we just?
Alright, we'll play in policy.
Just to discuss it in policy.
Yeah, that's good.
So let, let me ask another question then, um, are these professionals, do they know if they've gotten a three-year, okay?
No, they're only awarded a one-year contract, so, right, so at any time we could change it, that's just what's, what's um recommended in our policy.
In, in fact, uh, Mr. Ross, you could not do a three-year contract with me, um, or with other professionals, it's just, it's not allowed. It, it is a year-to-year contract.
So why do we even bother with?
The three years is just a cycle for the RFPs, so you're not doing, you know, all of them in one year, or it just kind of spreads them out. And that's been, that's been in place, but like I said, we do talk about the schedule every year, in case we want to deviate.
Do we have that many RFPs, we send out every, that's on your contract? We did?
Connie.
Uh, Carol, that was a great point, I'm glad you brought that up, um, I have a question for Janine with the RFPs. If one of the professional groups is done on July first, does there have to be a sixty-day period? In terms of the RFP giving an answer, what, what's, what's the timeline on something like that?
Are you talking, are you talking about when it has to be awarded after the RFPs are opened?
Well, like in other words, if, if the professional group is done July first, kind of walk me through, when do we have to put the RFPs out? What, what, what kind of timeline do we have with that?
Yeah, um, RFPs, you have to have, um, you know, we publicly advertise, and then there's a twenty-day period where um you can, you, you do have to set a date and open them all at once. But they have to be, the period has to be open for at least twenty days.
Okay, and then you have, what, sixty days to make a decision?
We, um, that's usually what's written in there, for the most part, my, if my memory is serving me correctly, we just, what we do is when we set the twenty days and we have the opening, we put it, we set it up so at the very next business committee, the business committee looks at all the RFPs and makes a recommendation. And then it would be, you know, discussed through the committee report, and then hopefully approved at that board meeting.
So then?
So we, we kind of, we kind of set it up just so it can be opened, we have time to look at them, and then bring them to the business committee.
Okay, so then what you're saying is with this professional firm, July first, you bring it up to the May Business Committee, then you would advertise for?
Right away.
Twenty days.
Yep.
And then you would open them up.
Yep.
And then go to the June?
Business meeting.
And then, at the June meeting, you would, you would make the award.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ralph, also, the month of May, your work session is May ninth, so your committee meetings, correct or wrong, Gina, are next week? Even though we're closing out tonight, your committee meeting is like, so your meeting is coming next week, right after this, right? Your policy student activities is Monday.
Monday, yep.
Boom.
Alright.
Alright, anything else on finance and facilities, I'm really glad I didn't miss that. No, alright, hearing none, uh, roll call.
Mr. Lindsay?
Staying on six, yes to everything else.
Mr. Tomzak?
I'm staying from number thirty-five, yes to everything else.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Uh, noted thirty-six and thirty-eight, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Um, yes.
Noted thirty.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. Love Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Alright, moving on, nothing for special education, nothing for negotiations, new business. So I'm just gonna walk this one in on the agenda, so we have our Student Board of Education representative that's gonna report out. Um, just a bit about the report out, these are, this is feedback from the students, so there hasn't been administration involved in terms of intervening or offering um suggestions or solutions, this is just feedback that our Board of Education representative, Angelina, has solicited from her classmates. So with that being said, take it away.
Alright, I held a forum, that was, actually it was pretty successful, and the students have requested that we had another one, if the results of this went well. But there were a few, there were actually a great deal of concerns, but I'm gonna cover a few of them tonight. Some are going to be more individually covered, I guess, that don't have to happen in this kind of meeting, but the first concern was a lot of plumbing things, so water fountains. Excuse me, my mic, alright, so, water fountains, they, most of them do not work, or they're dirty, unkept, the water's warm, unsanitary, that was one of the big concerns. Kind of going along with that was overall that the eleven-twelve side of the high school building compared to the nine-ten is, just the word they use is dirty. Unsanitary, not as well kept, and that in comparison, it just doesn't really measure up. Then going, staying similar with water concerns, one of the major concerns that was talked about through everyone was actually about the bathrooms. That was one of the main issues that was talked about. So with the bathrooms, a lot of them have very poor quality, and they're broken, and there's a lot of smoking and other things going on by students that aren't really being monitored properly. So one of the main concerns with that also went into E-hall pass, and students felt like it wasn't being either used properly, utilized correctly, or utilized at all. There will be different circumstances where different bathrooms are closed down because of staffing reasons, because we don't have enough people to cover them, or for whatever other reasons. And there won't be any notice, so if people go to use the E-hall bathroom, and then it's closed down, they'll have to walk around, find another one. And it's inconsistent on the actual pass with what's actually happening with the bathrooms. So people are missing a lot of class time, and sometimes there won't be any open on the eleven-twelve side, and people will have to walk all the way to the nine-ten side, and it's just about missing a lot of class. A lot of the complaints were about E-hall pass, and the way that the system of monitors works, not about monitors specifically, but just the way that their system works. And the fact that.
Excuse me, one second, monitors, you mean, sorry.
Hall monitors.
Hall monitors, okay.
Yes, and the overall state of the bathrooms is just, it's unkept, toilets are broken, there's sometimes water flooded onto the floor. There aren't working sinks all the time, or sometimes they won't shut off, there were just a lot of issues concerning water and plumbing. Um, another one was about, let me see. Primarily communication, so one of the big things that was touched on was that there was just poor communication from everything that's talked about at the board level, to teachers, administration, to students. There's just kind of different information coming everywhere, so nobody has an inconsistency, and people can't keep on track what is accurate and what is not accurate and what is changing. So that was a big issue, was general communication, which also went into access. One of the big things that was talked about was that there wasn't enough recognition to meetings in general, but specifically to the meeting that was just held, I know it was the first one, so obviously it's gonna be a little bit shakier, but students felt like it wasn't advertised properly, and that there wasn't an easy way to access me. Once I told them about the email, that, because I have just gotten a student board member email address, students didn't know about that. And they said that they wished there was either a place on a website, or that it was put somewhere where they knew how to reach me. So that was one of the main things, that they thought it was successful, and they would like more meetings like that, but they just wished there was an easier way to access me. And another thing was going into, it's the end of the year, obviously, with grading. The sync between SchoolG and Power School was a major concern, how it's kind of inconsistent. The grades don't always match up, at the end, they'll usually sync up, and you'll have the same average, but people were getting, um, in, parents that are on students, about, hey, why does your grade say it's a sixty here, but then in SchoolG, they'll show them and they'll put up, it's like a ninety-five. There's just a lot of inconsistencies between the two sites, and there was a bit of a Power School preference, just from what I've seen, but I've kind of heard that it goes either way. And just, it was just inconsistent, so students were just hoping that there's either one system that's used, or that the Power School grades aren't synced until the very end, and we just go off SchoolG grades. Just so people know what to use, and what to go based off of. It's actually the same thing with the counselors, there were a lot of times where students went to scheduling meetings, and they didn't, the counselors would pull up and be like, I don't know if you qualify for this class, because you have, like, I don't know, an eighty-four, but then they'd pull it up, and they wouldn't have that actual grade in the class. So it was just inconsistent with their actual grades, and it just is causing a lot of confusion. Uh, going into scheduling and testing, there was a lot of complaints about the testing that's been happening, whether it be NJGPA. They just thought that the way that the testing worked wasn't efficient and wasn't working out. And not the tests themselves, but just the way we went about it with scheduling, there were a lot of classes that were losing time over others. And another thing that they talked about was test prep. So we talk about how serious these tests are with the NJSLA, NJGPA, which is a graduating requirement. And students had wished that there was more resources to prepare, in-class help, videos, or just extra time in class. Whether that be at unit lunch, after school, or if there's just other ways to prep for it, a lot of the things I heard was, if this is a graduation requirement, shouldn't we be getting more prep for this, shouldn't we know the way the tests work, and they kind of just felt like they were being thrown into it. So that was another thing, and let me see, I think I hit primarily everything. Yeah, I think the main concerns, but it all kind of boiled down more or less to communication and consistency. So I think those are the main concerns, there were some that I have, do have to handle with specific people, but those were the overall concerns.
Alright, very good, thank you, so let's, let's unpack this a little bit.
Can we, well, can we bring up certain things in certain subcommittees? So IA might be a good place to talk about the syncing with SchoolG and Power School, um, same thing with the idea of test prep.
Yep.
Um, I don't know where E-hall pass, I know that's been a continuing discussion, if, if that, yeah, that kind of, I feel like should maybe be something all the committees tackle.
I think um, now that we have the list as well, we have Mr. Anderson with us, and this is obviously likely the first time you're hearing some of this from the students, which is great that you're here and you're hearing it firsthand. Um, so let's kind of action Jack slash Dr. Hibbs to take your list. Angelina, maybe you can make a copy of it, just take a picture of it and email it, and then that way we can kind of attack it one by one, because there's a lot there.
There actually is, there are quite a few other things, but I think they, like I said, should be handled individually.
Perfect, fair enough.
I just, I have just a real quick question, because we've discussed some of these at cabinet, and I'm kind of concerned that those issues weren't discussed further with, um, Mr. Anderson.
Give me an example.
Huh?
Give me an example.
Um, they were talking about the bathrooms, the difficulty with the bathrooms during cabinet.
We, we have, just say, I have some folks that.
Can you speak into your mic? My one, my one.
I said, just so you know, there were folks in administration that did walk-throughs at the high school bathrooms, so you know that.
I.
Okay.
I don't know who walked through the bathrooms, but I can confirm that they are not at all, especially the A-hall bathroom. A-hall, E and C, but especially A was the main concern, especially the women's bathroom. It just, there's water all over the floor, it's completely unkept, and the sinks don't work. So I don't know when they walked through, but I can tell you that I did do a little bit of digging around on my own to check. And almost everything that was being said was either completely accurate or fairly accurate, so that was one of the ones that was, it's not great.
Very accurate.
I have a question.
Yes.
Don't, uh, don't the schools have student councils that they bring problems to, and then the student council kind of brings it to the school administration, and then, I mean?
Yep, so the role of the Student Board of Education member is that to do this very task, to come to us. Um, student council, yes, there's certainly a role.
Student council's responsibilities are slightly different than mine, mine more comes from direct feedback that I then bring right here, versus student council goes through a lot of other things, and they're also, they also deal a lot with planning events and other student activities, and it isn't just this kind of thing.
What I'm saying is, shouldn't that go to the principal first before it comes to our level?
My position isn't supposed to go from administration, it's supposed to come in the same way that the other board members take their thoughts, opinions, and what they gather from the public. My public is the school, so the way that it should kind of streamline is through them to me here, or if they want to come and speak, usually they'll come and speak to me about it, but that's how it works.
Did you talk to the principals?
So, so I can.
You're circuit venting the principals.
So Ralph, I can, I can comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we had this very conversation about how we should do this, and the original thought was, I'll be very transparent, was that for Angelina to meet with Mr. Anderson and go over all this. And then we quickly um got an opinion from Ari, that according to the statute, it's not really designed, the Student Board of Education representative, to meet with the principal first before they come to a meeting and speak. The, the way it's designed, like it, love it, hate it, whatever it is, that's the way it's designed. That, that position is designed to come here to the Board of Education and give the feedback, it's not designed to have Mr. Anderson.
That's kind of embarrassing for the principal, though, that things are going on, he may not know, or she may not know about it, and you're jumping right up.
So, so, so I'll speak to this real quickly, because my initial comments before she reported out was that Mr. Anderson was not aware of what she was gonna list out, and he has not had the benefit of being able to remediate anything of what she said. So let me just, real quick, so that was a robust discussion before Angelina reported out. So this is no reflection, I'm gonna be very clear, on Mr. Anderson or anyone else. This is very much feedback that we shouldn't be scared to report out to the public, to the Board of Education, as direct feedback from the students to the Board of Education rep, that is the position for them to do that. So this is not, I'm gonna say it probably five more times, a reflection upon Mr. Anderson, period. This is feedback that was solicited, that now is the reason why I actioned Mr. Anderson, Jack slash Dr. Hibbs, as he comes on to take this list and address the problems. And then that way, in the next report out, whether it may be in two report outs from now. And then that way, in the next report out, whether it may be in two report outs from now, Angelina can then follow up and say, this is the great news. These items were all addressed. So, I understand where you're coming from, but a lot of debate around this is this is the position and the way it's designated, how we handle the Student Board of Education position.
I also think it has a lot to do with timing, too. Obviously, as a principal or other administration, they're, like, have very, very busy schedules. So, they don't have time, oh, they don't always have time to host consistent forums or have students always coming up to them with issues to keep a running list, in the same way that everyone here has a committee. This is kind of like my report out for a committee, as in everything wouldn't just directly go to the superintendent and be all on Mr. McGee or all on Dr. Hibbs. Like, that's just not, it wouldn't be as efficient. So, that's kind of why I'm here, to be able to take the perspective that I have and then share it directly to the board, so it can be worked out and distributed.
Well, I respectfully disagree.
You can.
Said, I respectfully disagree with that process.
You can, you can.
Just to be clear, I mean, the legislature just, it, it was just mandated probably a year or so ago that every board in the state have a student representative. So, the, um, the idea of a student representative is certainly not unique to Washington Township. I think that Washington Township is just lucky that they have such a good one in Ms. Chilla.
Could I, could I say something?
Sure.
Superintendent.
I just have a question. Adam, uh, I thought only high schools, only high schools' boards have a student representative.
Districts that have high schools have a student representative.
Yes. Could I say something in my last meeting about my man Ray Anderson? All right, what I know about Mr. Anderson, right, to reflect it. Um, Mr. Anderson is a, is about as strong a follow-up few man that we have in this district relative to concerns and the like. Doesn't ignore anything. So, I know, I wrote a list down. I probably wrote every word that was articulated. And I know he will get after things and may need help from others around his team, right? Because some things cost dollars. But I can assure you, you have his attention and his desire to have things be where they need to be for his students and his staff is at a very high level, Ray. If you don't mind me saying that, sir, it's gonna be the last time I'll be able to say anything about you while we're here, okay? So, we work together with Angelina and our board and our student cabinet that I have and Elaine as a team to get after things. And, um, I would suggest that you'll heed, will heed, Dr. Hibbs will. Because when you read it, you go, ooh, coming from the mouth of our children, right, our kids. So, there you go. So, I would predict good follow-through.
Uh, any other new business? Thank you, Angelina. Any other new business?
Um, I just got something to say about, about Bunker Hill Middle, uh, Bunker Hill Middle School. Um, I actually did a tour of them a couple of days ago and I had the opportunity to actually walk the halls. And, uh, something that I've been pretty passionate about, along with Mr. Tom, I'm not gonna speak for you. But, uh, speaking about the vocational programs, um, I was in awe, literally in awe, of their woodshop class. It was a breath of fresh air to see it. The equipment was top-notch. The instructor that's there was very professional. He knows what he's got. He's got a good head on his shoulders. Um, and I definitely think that that is a model of what the other middle school should aspire to, to become as far as entering a vocational program into the middle school. Um, so, I just wanted to, I just wanted to compliment Bunker Hill on that, because that, it almost looked like a professional, state-of-the-art facility in that, in that school. And, uh, Mr. Diastilio deserves a lot of credit and so does Mike Potter, I believe his name is, who's the instructor. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there.
That's awesome. Thank you. Anybody else new business? Connie?
Uh, yeah, it's for the solicitor. Um, I just have a question, if you could comment. Um, when I, when I first came on board, I, I was given this information and I know I have done it. And I, I became aware that this might be a problem with the Open Public Meetings Act, the sunshine law, that, for instance, if I, as a board member, wanna communicate with other board members, I could put up to three names on the, on the, on the, to, to, you know, the two, okay? And then, and blind copy all the rest of the board. It, it's come to my attention that that really should not be happening because it is not in line with the Open Public Meetings Act, doing that kind of thing.
There should not be any emails or communications between an effective majority of the board, that is a quorum of five or more, on an interactive basis, um, to, let's say, solicit, um, a discussion. Um, that would be violative of the Open Public Meetings Act. Whether they're blind copied or copied, uh, what's the opposite of blind copied?
Copy.
Actually copied, um, it, it matters not. Um, the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act is to have public bodies discuss their public business in the sunshine. And to the extent that there's going to be a back and forth by way of email, um, it should definitely not occur by five or more board members. And I would even say, you know, some, some board members, and not here, but members of public bodies may get cute and say, well, we'll only have four on this one and then we'll have, you know, four on the next one and then I'll do one separate, uh, so that we have now all nine people, um, involved. That, that, too, violates the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act. But I will say, in terms of, let's say, for informational purposes, for example, tonight's meeting is changed from a six o'clock start time to a nine o'clock start time. Well, let me not say nine o'clock, because that would be against the law. Meetings must start by eight. Uh, but let's say there was a change in time. There's nothing, in my opinion, that would prevent, um, Mr. McGee, let's say, from sending an email to all nine board members, saying, please do not reply all to this email, just letting everyone know that we're starting at eight o'clock tonight instead of six. You know, technically, is that a violation? Uh, perhaps, but there's no discussion. There's no back and forth. There's no interaction. Um, so, I would say, you know, for that, we would probably give a, a bye or a pass. Uh, but certainly, if there's interaction between five or more board members on an email, that is problematic.
So, it's just informational. It's okay.
I think, I.
So, in other words, we ask that, um, some of us don't have children in the school and let us go out to parents about certain things. Let, sorry, let us go out to parents about certain information. So, we ask that the same information that goes out to the parents be passed out to us as board members. Would that be fine?
If it was literally an email that the only thing was an attachment, a PDF attachment that said, dear parents of middle school children, today's spring physicals will happen. You know, technically, that's, to me, that's not a meeting, because you're not having a back and forth.
Okay.
Um, that, you know, that's, you know, hyper-technical review of it may say otherwise, but.
What about when it comes to, like, um, disseminating subcommittee notes? Because we had mentioned that everybody would like to see, you know, see a hard copy of notes so that they have something to refer back. Would that just be considered informational as long as nobody replies back, or should we just hold on that?
Um, well, I, I would say, you know, if you want to be absolutely safe, you post it to board docs.
Okay.
Uh, private board docs.
That's usually, is usually on there.
And it's something that board members could click on at their leisure if they want to. I would say that that's not a meeting.
I think, uh, I appreciate that. I think it's been very helpful, because I don't think we, we've been abiding by that rule. Uh, when you ask for, uh, board members to respond or give information that should really be discussed here at the board meeting. So, I appreciate your update and I'm sure everybody else does, too.
Did you, did you have an example of that, Connie, that you wanted to share?
I think all board members would, would understand what I asked.
Right.
Um, again, I said that when I first came on board, I was more or less given the information that it's okay to do that if you blind copy most of them. And then I've gotten some information just recently that that, doing that violates the Open Public Meeting Act. And I think Adam can confirm that, and we just need to move forward and not do that anymore.
Right. So, I can go ahead and comment in the spirit of transparency, because there's no reason not to be, right? Um, Adam, I believe what Connie is referring to is me as the board president, um, blind copying the board on a prior incident that may have happened or not, Monday night. Um, when I blind copy the board, I've asked Ari probably too many times, tell me how I should handle this communication if I want to get it out to the board. I copy Elena Lstra, um, and those that need to be copied, and then I say, blind copying the board. Um, Ari has told me that I, it's within my realm to do that as long as it's not anything that I'm asking questions and going back and forth. So, if you want to further comment, I believe that may be what Connie is referencing about me blind copying the board. I'm happy to supply a copy of the email if you'd like to review it.
I need not see it. Um, I, in fact, I think I actually did see it, to be honest with you. Um, again, for informational purposes, whether it's, it's, it's a one-way, hey, here's this. Um, you know, there's not an interaction. There's not a, a meeting, if you will. Um, that, that's really all I could say, but, you know, look at it on a case-by-case basis. Um, whether or not, uh, you were to blind copy the individuals to push out a one-sided communication or not blind copy and rather openly copy, you're pushing out information. You're not asking for a back and forth dialogue. You're not asking for input. You're probably also writing in there or have perhaps at some ti, points written in there, please do not reply all. And perhaps that's the reason why you blind copy. It could be because if you blind copy somebody and then they reply all, it actually doesn't go to everyone who was blind copied. So, that could be a reason why an attorney may have told you years ago to do it that way. Um, I, I just can't be sure. But again, the, the idea and the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act is to not, to ensure that there is not a discussion, a meeting, if you will, um, of any substance or import.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to necessarily go to that, but since you brought it up, in, in the body of that email was to the people, get back to me with any questions that you have. So, that's where that, that, that back and forth, the proper place, right here at the board, at the board meeting. Thank you.
Um, I'm happy to next time bring forward the incident publicly and not blind copy the board. So, noted. I will do that. Thank you. Um, I think we're, new business? Are we done with new business? Anybody else? Connie, anybody? No? All right. Motion to open to the public.
Second.
Second.
I have no yellow cards, but I'm happy to wait. Yep.
I just wanted to follow up on the, um, you know, the, uh, the one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand dollars that, you know, we may potentially be spending on AI equipment. I, I just feel it's a very slippery slope to go down this path, because the next thing you know, we're indoctrinating our children to like a social credit-style system or a, a cashless society where next, they're told how they can spend their money. Their, their every thought, uh, everything they say will be evaluated by this AI system. And I think it's being presented as a, like, a, a problem, uh, reaction, kind of solution-type thing. Like, we had this principal come in last week and say, this is to prevent school violence. So, we have this school violence problem and then we have to bring in this solution, the AI system, and then this will solve the problem. And it's the same thing. We've piled the Hibb reports on the desk and then we have to bring in this solution, this AI solution. And then the next thing you know, our kids are being completely surveilled and they're indoctrinated into some type of social credit system. And that's my issue with going down this road. And again, these, we're cutting, what, three administrative positions, fifteen administrative support positions, four support staff, and five certified staff positions, save two million dollars. And we're gonna spend one million dollars on this system. And I just think that's a very slippery path to go down. Um, you know, we get our phones, we install an application on there, we buy a computer, we install an operating system, and we just quickly kick, click through, you know, all these legalese and we're just giving all this information to these systems. And, um, I, I just think that's a slippery path to go down. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think just one thing I will say, that the specific dollar amount that you're mentioning, there's no AI in there. That's all technology infrastructure throughout the district. So.
Can't have a back and forth. Can't have a back and forth. Yeah, put in a card, please. Hold on one second. Let me just.
Yep, sure. It's Josette Kyer.
Yep.
Okay, let me, let me preface this by saying, the reason why AI is being brought up is because it was brought up the last meeting and it was brought up by an ex-principal. And the ex-principal proposed that we get an AI system that would be able to track if someone had firearms in the parking lot of schools. Do you all recall?
Yes.
Okay. That's why. So, he's not just pulling this out of nowhere.
Right.
And I know the attorney said that, you know, there's some issues with discussing security in schools and I do understand that. I do have some legal knowledge, so I understand what you're saying. However, um, sorry, I'm short and this isn't, cutting it. But, um, so the, the biggest concern here that I'll, will reiterate, that my husband has, is we are getting rid of physical people who are invaluable, um, you know, to our children and to the educational process. I get that we're not, you know, taking away programs, but we're taking away people who implement and use these programs every day. And what our concern is, is we're gonna replace those people with computers. And let's face it, this is our society right now. This is where we're going. Um, that is not a conspiracy theory. That is real life. And that is our concern. Um, I used to be support staff, I'll be transparent, and I could speak firsthand. Um, it's upsetting to me. I, I noticed when I went on wtpss.org consistently, since I was terminated from my position due to refusing, uh, vaccination and testing, um, I've noticed consistently that there has been anywhere from twenty-something to thirty-something support staff open positions. I just logged on. It's dropped to one. There's no way those positions were filled. I know they weren't. So, that's the other thing. On that paperwork, it's just saying, we got rid of four support staff, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. What happened to the other thirty-two? Or, excuse me, thirty-three? I think it says, we're looking for one support staff. You can't convince me that all those positions were filled. There's no way. Um, I worked in the district for almost three years and I was active in the district for a while, pursued a job in the district for several years. And it's consistent across the board, especially during and post-COVID, that there were twenty-some to literally, last time I looked, thirty-six positions a few weeks ago. Where'd they go? That's more than four support staff gone. I don't get it. It's not computing with me. That's upsetting. That's upsetting. And for those of you who don't know what support staff do, we work in the health office, otherwise known as the nurse's office. We work one-on-one with children, um, as assistants for special needs, special ed. Um, there's different levels of that. There's, um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe bus drivers are also considered support staff. So, we're invaluable, or used to be invaluable, um, but they are invaluable. So, that's disturbing to me. And I'm just segueing there from the AI. But, back to the AI, it's a reality in our society right now and it's happening, and it's a valid concern. And where we're seeing that dollar amount attached to something like technical, I forget how it's worded. Somebody hopped me out here. I forget. Um, yeah. Yeah, it's vague. We want to, we're concerned and we would like to know, we would like more transparency about like the specifics of that. What exactly are we spending that dollar amount on with regards to, under that umbrella of technical, whatever hell it's worded? Thank you, technology equipment. So, that's it? That's all I have? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and congratulations again, Mr. McGee, we'll miss you.
I will miss everything, and my thanks is really to everyone here, not me. I, I thank you.
I, I know we look exceptionally, like, young for our age, but I've known Mr. McGee for quite some time. I've actually known Mr. McGee since he was a student teacher, so I've just aged both of us, but I mean, we should be proud of that.
I worked in township four years before I even walked into the building as a teacher.
Yeah, Wedgwood, you were at Wedgwood as a student teacher, and that's when I had you.
It was actually almost forty-eight years.
Wow.
We can't be that old, that's impossible. But congratulations again.
Means I'm old.
And enjoy, you deserve it, it's well deserved.
It's time for me to go.
It's time, it's time, you deserve it.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any other cards. Motion to close to the public.
Second.
Should we have the honors to say? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mrs. Chilla.
So moved.
All right. Thank you, everyone. (applause) Do you think my kids are in bed yet?
No, they're gonna be up there drinking Mountain Doom.